Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Committee of the Whole for November 18th. My name is Kevin Murdock. I will be chairing, mayor, and I'll be chairing this committee of the whole. I want to start by acknowledging that we're holding this meeting on the traditional territories of the Coast and Strait Salish peoples, specifically the Lakewengan speaking people known today as the Esqai, Maltin Songi's First Nations. Their connections to these lands continue to this day. Also, for the large audience here, if you come to speak forward, these meetings are recorded and livestreamed, so those comments will be archived on our website for future viewing. Item number one on the agenda is Parks, Recreation, and Culture. And I believe we have Mr. Meekels here to speak to the, to these, if you want to give a quick overview.
Thank you through the chair. For those that haven't met, Steve Meekel, the manager of Recreation and Cultural Services. Ray Herman are directors away this week. So, the Parks, Rec, and Culture Commission from November 6th, so the mayor, Honorable Mayor, attended to give an update on the committee commission structure review process. We received verbal reports from the Playground Subcommittee and from the Public Arts Advisory Committee as well. The bulk of the meeting was spent in a presentation of our budget projections for 2019 and the provisional budget for 2020, basically presented to ensure there was no outstanding items to be addressed prior to it being forwarded to estimates. Commission endorsed the budget as presented and endorsed bringing the budget to estimates, which will be in February. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions to Mr. Meekel? I guess Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of sort of questions of interest. It did say that for the People's Choice Awards for the artwork, that we had 1,200 votes. I was just wondering if that compared favorably to the year before? Is it up, down?
Mr. Meekel?
Thank you through the chair. Thank you, Counselor Patterson. It's relatively stable. It was actually down a little bit this year, but what we saw this year was quite an increase in online votes versus the handbill drop-off votes.
That's great. Thank you, Counselor Patterson. Another question?
Yes, just the reference to security deposits for continued care of trees that are required replacements. I was just wondering if we have data on how many deposits are returned after the three-year period?
I'll turn that to Mr. Heidley, if he has that information at hand.
Through the chair. Sorry, Counselor Patterson, I don't have that available right now. We usually summarize everything at year-end in regards to what is returned and what is forfeited.
Thank you. I'll look forward to that information at year-end, then.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Oh, Counselor Zelka.
If I may, through the chair, very much appreciate the report and always fascinating to you to see everything that's going on in Oak Bay. One of the titles in the report says arena teens indoor sports fields, but there's nothing about teens. What's the intent of that section, please?
Mr. Meekel?
Thank you. Through the chair. The, it is basically mirrors the structure of the staffing within the organization. So, sports, the teen center, and the indoor sports field all fall under one team, so to speak, a program coordinator and a programmer. So, they've just been relatively stable in the youth center the last month in terms of their drop-ins, and there weren't any major special events to report on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Much appreciate that. A second question has to do with, with respect to the trees in the Parks area. I much appreciated reading about all of the sort of, you know, trees that came down and the applications that came in, but I do know that it seems to be silent for the number of applications that were put forward that were denied. Here at council, we do know of at least two, but it's nowhere in the minutes, and it's hard for the public to keep track of these things. I was wondering if whether this could be expanded in the future to include all movement with respect to permits going forward, whether that was possible.
Mr. Heidley, is that practical?
Through the chair, yes, that is possible.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing any other questions? Seeing any? I don't have a question. I just have a comment, and that is just, I noticed with all the events that happen in the course of the year, this case getting busier and busier all the time, that I think it would be probably worth having a look at how we're doing our notifications of events and activities. The Artist Studio Tour this year, it seemed to be fluctuate, depending on who I talked to, how busy it was, but I think those sorts of things could benefit from the broader communication strategy as a municipality and to make sure that people are aware. It's amazing, it's so hard to get in front of people, that I just think a concerted effort to make sure that we're making people aware of all these events going on is, I always talk to my family about it, and they're always amazed at how many things happened that didn't know about it. So, that's just really a comment, that we can maybe leverage our staff well to get those things. Mr. Meekel, did you want to respond?
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair, that particular event this past, past few weeks, past month, did hit our radar as well for that same reason. We had quite a fluctuation of artists that saw a great number of people and artists that didn't see all that many people. So, we are in the midst of reviewing our communications plan there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's always, always amazing, again, how often things get raised and the staff are on top of it before we think of it. So, thank you. All right, we just need a motion to approve the minutes. So moved, so the Green.
Second.
Second to Counsel Patterson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed, unopposed. Thank you very much. And then the second item on the agenda, I'm going to presume is going to take a little longer to get through, but still involves Parks, Recreation, and Culture is our tree protection bylaw, and we have Mr. Heidley here, manager of Parks, to, I'm assuming, to provide an overview and to answer any questions that we might have.
Thank you, Kevin, and through, or through the chair and fellow council members. I will give you a little bit of overview of where we are right now. So, the urban forest strategy and the tree protection bylaw are documents that are, are meant to engage the citizens and really outline the recommended steps that Oak Bay should take to protect, enhance, and monitor the urban forest. That really helps define our character. The urban forest refers to all trees within the municipal boundary, regardless of land type or ownership. It's trees in private yards, street trees, woodlands, fields, foreshore, they're all part of the, the urban forest. Oak Bay has about 10,000 boulevard trees and an unknown number of trees on private property and in our parks. And combining the private and public trees, give Oak Bay a total canopy cover of about 33%. And in comparison to, say, a similar-sized municipality, Duncan is at 26%, Campbell River would be at 33%, but it's a completely different forest cover, and Victoria is at about 18%. And I can say that over the, the last decade or so, the canopy cover really hasn't changed that significantly. And one of the reasons being is that we've had a decade's worth of tree growth, but what we have noticed is that it is beginning to slowly decline, and that is a concern. So, as the canopy declines, so do all the benefits that the urban forest begins to defry, such as cleaning the air or managing the water. And when we did the urban forest strategy, a couple of the figures that came up was that it's estimated that Oak Bay's current tree canopy has stores of about 98, stores about 98,000 tons of carbon, which if you put a dollar figure on that, is about $3.8 million. And the trees sequester about 3,400 tons, or 3,400 tons of carbon annually. And the difference between those two is the carbon storage, is carbon that refers to the, the quantity of, of carbon stored in the, in the trees, and the carbon sequestration refers to the process of removing carbon from the air and depositing it into the trees as, as a reservoir, which is pretty, pretty significant. So, comes down to the more trees, the better for, for the Oak Bay environment and the environment right through the Capital Regional District. So, the urban forest also provides wildlife habit, and for example, we've now identified through Joff Renewal, 250 bird species that have been identified just in Uplands Park, which is the highest number in any of, any of the regional parks. And it also gives the community access to nature and helps with the economy and tourism. So, really, why is the canopy declining? Well, essentially, we're managing a mature to over-mature urban forest, which is both on private and public lands. And a good example of that is the Canarvan area where all of the trees that were planted were short-lived trees. So, they're plum, they're hawthorn, they're mountain ash, and they're all at the end of their life. And another example is that over the last, well, since 2013, since we began to track all of our, our tree loss on private land, we have lost over 1,400 trees, over 60 centimeters in diameter on private land. And this was really because the trees were dead, diseased, or dying. And that, out of those 1,400 trees, about 86% are removed because they're dead diseased, dead diseased or dying, and 14% are lost through development. So, the urban forest strategy identifies that tree protection on public and private land does not adequately protect trees through the development process. Replacement trees are not adequately adequate to compensate for canopy loss and permit fees are insufficient, nonexistent right now, to cover the cost of administration of any of the permits. So, to maintain and increase our canopy cover, which is now at 33%, that we really want to plant, protect, and manage more. And by protecting more, we can slow the decline of the canopy cover loss because trees take years and years to develop, and you can, you can cut them down in one day. Retaining more, and we're already doing this, staff are working with applicants, building and planting right on board with this, to proactively retain as many trees as we can on development sites. And we have to begin to plant more. And that means planting strategically across the municipality, and really it comes down to planting the right tree in the right place and selecting trees that have resilience to disease and climate change. And the, in the urban forest strategy, just on, on municipal lands alone, there's about 1,200 spots that are available right now for planting on boulevards and in our parks. We also want to expand private property planting, which we are attempting to do right now with a partnership that we have with the Community Association, and this is the Grow the Oaks in Oak Bay. And this idea initiated from Jill Croft, who was one of the founding members of the Oak Bay Community Association, that wanted to plant an oak tree for every year of her life, and that was 71 trees, and we're almost at that target right now, and those trees are going on to private property. But overall, the urban forest strategy identifies for us to reach our target, 6,000 medium-to-large trees. So, that's about 1,200 on municipal lands, of which we already know the locations, and about 4,800 on private lands. And I will say that the 4,800 may be somewhat, and I've used this term before, as aggressively optimistic, but I certainly, and I certainly understand that, you know, the numbers could be variable. But I feel that with the support of the community, and we're beginning to, to build that very constructively, that the district has the possibility to, to reach the defined canopy cover targets, and I would consider anything 36 to 40% a success. I also want to state that we need to recognize more, and this is right through the community, and we're beginning to see it, that the forest is just a vital living asset to the community, and to view the forest, the urban forest as, as green infrastructure that, that provides immense benefit. And I've, I've said this many times before, it really is infrastructure, and it's the only infrastructure that, that increases with value as it begins to age. When we were doing the urban forest strategy during the public consultation event, many people raised the issue about protecting more trees under the bylaw. They wanted to see strengthening the rules for tree protection and replacement in development, the need for more replacement trees there, higher penalties, and greater enforcement. Consistent with that message, steps to strengthen the bylaw receives significant majority support in the public online survey. I'll also mention that while there was majority support in the community for strengthening the bylaw by regulating the trees to a smaller size, those not in favor were strongly opposed, indicating the issue could be very polarizing. So, the urban forest strategy identifies really five main objectives. The first one is protect and enhance canopy cover to approach 40% by 2045. Support a healthy, well-adapted and diverse tree population, we're beginning to do that through our tree choice. Manage the urban forest for community climate change adaptation, we're doing that. One of the things that we've partnered with the Community Association on is an upcoming, upcoming climate talk on December 2nd, where one of the presenters is one of the instructors of something called the Community Cool Kid out of the UBC School of Urban Forestry, and that is meant to engage the community in what they can do to really climate-proof their, their streets, community house, et cetera. So, it should be interesting, and I certainly invite you all to come. We want to strengthen, strengthen the natural heritage, support healthy ecological systems and biodiversity. What we're doing in Uplands Park, we're well on the way along there, and we want to engage and partner with the community to build stewardship of the urban forest. And this is the, the key piece, and the, this, the tree protection bylaw and the urban forestry go hand, hand in hand in this, where everybody understands the objective and where we're heading. So, to support the five objectives, again, one of the major recommendations of the urban forest strategy is to amend the current tree protection bylaw. So, the, but the tree bylaw amendment was intended to increase the number of trees protected and replanted on private property. It was also to strengthen tree protection during development and shift replacement requirements associated with development to a canopy-based approach, so that replacements contribute to the canopy cover target by 40% by 2045. And I will say the canopy-based approach, we're the only municipality that I know of that are doing that, and it's, it's been successful so far with, I'm actually surprised that how little pushback there's been, but Deborah and Bruce could probably attest to that a little bit more than, than, than I could. The tree bylaw amendments will also complement Oak Bay's broader community goals for climate change, for neighborhoods, for built environments, parks, and open spaces, and will help set the strategic vision and strategic direction, including actions required to help manage Oak Bay's urban forest. The bylaw will also regulate cutting or pruning of trees on private property, prohibit tree damage and activities, set requirements for replacement trees and for securities for the protection of trees to be retained during construction. It already does some of those things, this has just been enhanced. But protection methods are an important piece, but really to successfully achieve the suggested canopy cover targets and the other identified objectives, a long-term and certainly a more comprehensive approach that links tree removal to tree replacement and proactive tree maintenance programs that encompass both private and public lands is so important. And this includes bringing in the community into this whole piece. And one of the things is that we need to have more district conversations on how we can help achieve the strategic goals that, that I mentioned, and because to protect and grow and manage the forest is vital, just to share this resource for future generations. So, really, this is where we are in the, in the process. You have the, the Tree Protection Draft bylaw, and overall, the content of the tree protection bylaw is complete. We have reviewed, we have received legal review on the bylaw, and I suspect certainly there will be some revisions to be made after discussion. So, staff are seeking any feedback from council, and certainly residents on the content, and would like to recommend that the tree protection bylaw be referred to a future counter, council meeting with any recommended changes.
Thank you, Mr. Heidley. I appreciate the overview. The process we're going to take here is I'll invite council to ask questions of staff. Counsel can ask questions, I'll go to the audience, if anybody from the audience wishes to speak, make comments or questions, and I'll come back to this table and, and deal with the, the issue through resolution and recommendations either to, back to staff or, or to council. I, I would say this is, there's a lot of detail in these that have the bylaws here. The committee's welcome to ask questions of those details if you see fit, but we're trying, I think, at this point, to make sure that we are applying our governance lens to it, to make sure that we give, I mean, really, to decide whether or not this is meeting that right balance of, is this achieving the goals that we're trying to achieve in the, in the spectrum of, of the broader tree protection goals. So, if people get too deep, I'll probably bring them up again, but feel free to ask any questions that, that you see fit in this, in this conversation. So, with it, are there questions of staff? Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Heidley, for this report. And I also, just while I'm acknowledging your work on the report and the bylaw, I also want to acknowledge just all of the positive comments that I receive about the Parks Department staff. And I know my personal experience with the district arborist has been very professional. I'd like to say pleasing, although usually I'm asking for assistance because I have a problem, so I, but nevertheless, he's, they just, the staff are very professional and, and very knowledgeable, and so I certainly am, am pleased always to deal with them. One question that I have on the bylaw, it does refer to designating significant trees, and that if the district so desires that a tree be designated as a significant tree, the property owner must agree to the designation. And, but I'm just wondering if you could perhaps give us some clarity, is there any special conditions to a significant tree that an owner is bound to as compared to just a, a nice tree on the property?
Mr. Heidley, and I believe it does need to, she has mentioned twice in this one, is the, is, is that reference, as Counsel Patterson pointed out, another one as well that, that also lays out a bit more of a process where we have to invite the owner, but they're not required to, to give their assent. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that is correct, Mayor Murdock. We did have a discussion with legal review on significant trees. It was explained to us that, in fact, the tree can be deemed significant by council without the owner's consent. If it was an under-protected tree, though, let's say less than what would be recommended in the, in the new bylaw, or use the current bylaw, if it was under 60 centimeters, then it would not be protected. We left it a little bit open-ended because it is something that we would like to engage the community on, is that this whole concept of significant trees, whether they're historical, whether they're habitat, whether they're unique in regards to, to their wildlife, or cultural, or, or landmark. I think it's a, it's a really good platform to get out into the community because we have many trees that aren't identified or on our list as trees that are significant. But as it stands, after discussing it with, with the lawyer, is that council can deem a tree significant without the owner's consent.
So, just for clarification, then, is there any extra effort that an owner would be required in the care, care of, of the tree to maintain it? And if the owner failed to adequately care for the tree, prune the tree, whatever is required, would the district then step in and take any action?
Mr. Heidley?
Through the chair. That's a good question, Counselor Patterson. At this time, no. I do know that other municipalities that have significant trees do offer some financial compensation for anything that may need to be done to the tree, but we do not. We would hope that, that the recognition of having a significant tree would offers some interest in keeping the tree as healthy as possible.
Thank you. If I was to get a little clarification on that answer, is, are those programs similar then to what the Heritage Foundation does in terms of providing grants to, to help fund, like a regular pruning to that sort of thing, to owners keep trees healthy by default because they, they have money to cover those costs? Is that the sort of program that exists?
Yes, that's, that's correct, Counselor, or Mayor Murdock. I did belong to the Significant Tree Committee in Sanage, and any work that needed to be done to the tree, and that, that included in improving the, the critical root zone of the tree, for example, the owner would have to get three estimates and, and bring them to the committee and for approval, and 50% of the cost was covered.
Thank you. Counselor Patterson?
Yes, thank you. If I can continue, I've also had the dubious honor over the last couple of years of, of dealing with a certified dangerous tree assessor. And so, I've certainly learned that there are specific requirements in getting that certification, and I think that's something that you may want to consider adding to the document, is that the province actually does have a certificate regulatory requirement for it. But in, in the dealings with the tree assessor that I have been in contact with, he has brought to my attention the, how careful you need to watch the impact of, the cumulative impact of blasting or development that is going on around you, because as a district, we certainly enforce protections when development is occurring. But for instance, in our neighborhood, where we had three or four sessions of blasting, the, the assessor I dealt with said that in his opinion, because of the extent of it, at least two to three of the trees in the neighborhood would probably also be required to come down within probably about three years. Three years later, we are having another two trees removed. So, I'm wondering if we consider that when we are looking at the urban forest canopy and maintaining it, the cumulative impact of blasting, and also wondering if a member of staff is a certified dangerous tree assessor?
Mr. Heidley?
Through the chair, thanks, Counselor Patterson. Yes, all three of our arborists are certified tree risk assessors. It's called a little bit differently, a different name. It's called a Tree Risk Assessment Qualification, which is different than, than what you refer to, but it mainly refers to assessing trees in an urban interface. In regards to the blasting, it's tough for trees, it really is. And, and one of the reasons that we do see canopy decline, and I refer to it as, as death by a thousand cuts, it's not just the blasting, it's the, it's the new water service that gets put into the house, it's the new sidewalk, it's the new pavement cap, it's just so many little things that just add up against a tree, it's the, it's the property, three properties over that the topography can completely changes and the water course differs. And this is why we're finding so many issues in the urban forest, and it's not just us, it's everywhere. It really is death by a thousand cuts, but blasting is particularly, is nasty on trees.
Thank you.
I'll let somebody else have it.
Sure. I have Counselor Green, then Counselor Ne. I'm sure everybody wants to have, has some questions attached here, so Counselor Green?
Thank you very much. And through you too, Mr. Heidley, thank you for a very, very comprehensive report. I can see that so much work has gone into this. I think I've been hearing about the tree, the, you know, the tree bylaw changing. I think I've been hearing about the tree, you know, the tree bylaw changing for many, many years since moving to Oak Bay, and it's very exciting to see a product now. I just had some questions from some residents who contacted me, and I wondered if you would mind just answering a few of those, Mr. Heidley, and through you, Mayor. One of the points that was asked was under number two, under the summary of major recommended changes, and point two, the question was why 60 centimeters versus 30? So I said that I would ask that question.
Mr. Heidley?
Through the chair, thank you, Councilor Green. So you're asking why, why has it gone to 30 from 60?
No, from 30 to, yes, from 30 to 60, sorry.
Well, it's actually gone from, currently it's at 60.
Oh, 60 to 30, sorry.
60 to 30. Really to collect more trees on a lot during the development process, so if you were developing a property, a lot of those trees that are 30 centimeters to 40 to 50 are often removed. We would like to see them count as actual canopy cover, as trees that are well-established and are well on their way, depending on what they are, of course. It also regionalizes things a little bit. The city of Victoria is moving relatively quickly to 30 centimeters, so we'd be the same as them. Squamult already is. So are some of the municipalities in the lower mainland at 30 centimeters. So that was really essentially the number that we came up with, where we felt that we would capture young enough trees that were vibrant enough to reestablish themselves on a property that had been disturbed.
Thank you. Under point five, the building envelope, footprint, and of course zoning, first of all, I'm very happy to see this reference. I think one of my biggest concerns has been the destruction of the flora and fauna on small lot infill projects, particularly in South Oak Bay in recent years, so I'm pleased to see this. My question under number five was, do you have, had you thought about replacement size specifications? And I ask the question because maturity could take certainly beyond my lifetime, but is it possible to specify the size of replacement trees? Or is that unwise? Thank you.
Through the chair, thanks, Councilor Green. We have at a four-centimeter diameter, basal diameter of, for replanting, which is, depending on the species, a relatively fair-sized tree.
Okay.
Often on sites, though, younger trees will reestablish much quicker than ones that are larger. So, but in saying that, that wasn't a consideration in this objective. So a four-centimeter diameter tree is, I would consider a large tree that you can buy from a nursery.
Okay, thank you. Under number six on zoning, a resident was concerned about the placement of trees and their impact in the future on shading, sunlight, and so on, particularly in small lots, and particularly if we're trying to encourage sort of an urban food growth strategy in Oak Bay, encouraging people to grow food in their backyards and so on. So their concern was placement with these zoning regulations. Do you have any comments about that? It may not be a question, you know, we can answer here, but that was a question that was asked, thank you.
I think it's a very fair question. It may come to come back to this table, is what is that balance that we're trying to strike between ensuring there's adequate light for food growth as well as bringing the benefits of a tree canopy? Mr. Heidley?
Through the chair, thanks, Councilor Green. Yeah, it would be considered, for sure. We understand that there is tremendous community interest in food forests, in gardening, and it really comes down to right tree, right place. And we're certainly not excluding fruit trees from canopy cover content, even though you don't see them in the list, it's certainly something that we'd be open to consideration, where you could plant a standard-sized apple, which is a long-lived tree that does get to a good size and would count towards canopy cover, or many of the plum trees, for example, which are as much ornamental as a fruit bearing. So there's possibilities there. There's also possibilities to open up pockets of light if some trees are too large. I mean, this is a discussion that, oops, I apologize. It's my dog saying he needs to go for a walk.
That was very interesting.
We often have this conversation in regards to trees on properties and light for vegetable gardens.
Okay, thank you. And I have one last question. Under point eight, securities, a resident expressed the concern for people who are on fixed incomes or may have some financial challenges. Is there any concern around a cost burden to residents around the whole security issue? Thank you.
Mr. Heidley?
Through the chair, thank you, Councilor Green. The security issue is for new development here, so if you, it would be for building a new house, and I'll give you an example. You have a property in the uplands, for example, and eight garyoaks are being removed, and there's six left. All of those six garyoaks are over 60 centimeters in diameter, would take $5,000 as security for each tree. And that would be returned once the building had been given its final occupancy, which would be after the landscape. And we would also be looking at the landscape plan and ensuring that we would meet the canopy cover targets, and if you weren't meeting the canopy covers' targets with what's required for that zoning, that's when an additional security is taken for 200 meters squared per, for canopy cover. I don't know if I'm explaining this clearly, it was clear to me, but it could be a financial burden, but if it's mainly for new house construction is what it is, or major new developments.
Okay, I really appreciate, thank you for answering all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Green. If I just do a follow-up question on that, is, are those same pieces, if there's renovations being undertaken, where, at what point, if, in the building permit process? I, that was the question I had reading, is I couldn't quite figure where, so if that same house in the upland was doing an addition or adding a dorm, or does that still trigger the same piece where you have that same six trees at $5,000 each, they have to be bonded for that time period? Does that, does that kick in the same way?
At this time, Mayor Murdock, yes, it could. It would really depend on what comes through building and planning, and this is what gets us out to look at the lot and decide what's what. And we would really look at the overall impact of the property.
Okay, sorry, I was speaking this year, I'm going to jump in just because I'm curious about this thread, is there discretion? I mean, I didn't read, I mean discretion's always a bit dangerous, but in terms of where these would get applied, if there's no perceived danger to the trees, that wouldn't apply? And if there is, it would get applied? Or is it just essentially in the bylaw written like this?
It's in the bylaw written like this.
Okay, so there's, okay. Thank you. I have Councilor Nay next.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, some comments, questions to staff, and I just want to start off saying that I really appreciate the work, Mr. Heidley, that you have done here. And I also want to, it's really, it's really significant for our community, and I want to acknowledge two people in the audience, both Ron Carter and Rick Marshall, who were on the Parks and Rec Commission when we first brought the urban, weren't you on the commission? But you had input, Mr. Carter, yeah, about the urban forest strategy, of which one of the recommendations was to move the tree bylaw forward, and you were strong advocates that that be so. So we're here now doing that. And to you, Mr. Heidley, I think what I'm so impressed with is the process that you've led here, is you've thoroughly engaged our community and aligned the bylaw with the values of our community. I feel very confident that some of the quite bold moves that you've made here are well-aligned with the values of our community. So I really appreciate the process. I'm impressed with the outcome. I like the reduction in size of trees, the user pay type program that you've attempted to introduce here, I think that makes sense, so that our community starts to understand there's a price to be paid for supporting this kind, the natural infrastructure in our community. And the replacement trees on private land is big. I think that's a real big improvement for our community, and I agree with what your comments were, that that's going to work towards achieving the goals that we've defined. On that point of the goals that we've defined in our community, I know we set those targets before the council acknowledged climate emergency, and I am not entirely clear of the target set by our neighboring communities, but my first question to Mr. Heidley is, this might be a little unfair, but maybe you could help us understand these targets in the context of what's going on in the region. Is aiming for a 40% coverage by 2045 fast enough? I mean, is there, is there any point in accelerating that target or moving it forward?
Mr. Heidley?
Through the chair, thank you, Councilor Nay. Certainly, anything to expedite getting trees into the ground is, will only be a benefit long-term, for sure. In regards to a 35 to 40% canopy cover, there really hasn't been any definitive studies on saying that, once you get to this percentage of canopy cover, these are the benefits you're going to get. But I can tell you that the benefits that have been looked at in some of the American cities in regards to canopy cover and, and let's say, value-added monetary return are absolutely tremendous. So I think that 35 to 40% would be excellent for Oak Bay if we can maintain that. Looking long-term, though, I do know the state of where we are with the mature to over-mature urban forests throughout the municipality. I will say this, though, that with the condition of, let's say, the sewer system in the uplands or the storm sewer system, if you didn't have 45% canopy cover in the uplands, you would have considerably more overflow events during heavy rain, rainstorms, for sure. So the trees right there are working tremendously.
Just to follow through you, Mayor, if we were to expedite this target, what would be the consequence of that? Is it, is it a money issue or what?
It's partly a money issue, for sure. A big part of it is getting the community on board and beginning to, to work with tree stewards that, and I know they're out there, I think two may be here, to begin to work with tree stewards throughout the municipality, that they too can engage in the community. And there's opportunity, I know that we do have some reserve money from fine money, et cetera, that we could begin to look at maybe some subsidizing trees to get those trees on private land, for example. So it's really important that it's a good news story for everybody, and people want to be a participant. And to be a participant, they really need to understand the values of what an urban forest does for the community and for the capital regional district.
Okay, thank you very much. I just have one more question. I know others have questions, but I'll just ask this last one. I had a couple, you asked a simple question. It was a question that was brought up by somebody who wrote a letter. It has to do with the swing on the limb, that that would be called damage to a tree. I'm wondering if you could help us understand how a swing on a limb could, is called damage or could contribute to damage on a tree?
This is on a municipal tree, specifically.
It's a municipal tree on the boulevard, and we've had a couple of incidences where the swing can swing into traffic that is moving on the street.
Okay, so it is specifically municipal, thank you. Okay.
Thank you. That's a good question, and I had a similar question, I guess, is this a question, I guess I would have, is this a tree protection issue or is it a liability issue that we should just flag it so that the owner, you know, accepts liability after deciding to put a swing on a tree? Because there's a number of lovely trees on municipal, or swings on municipal trees around the community, and I think they do add something to the community. Mr. Heidley, is that something that we can deal with, not in this bylaw, but through a liability question?
I would say that it could be both, depending on how the tree is attached to the swing or how the swing is attached to the tree. Often they'll, you'll have big lag bolts that go into the tree to hold the swing, and sometimes you'll use chain that goes around a very large limb, and it just slowly just takes away all the bark and the limb begins to die. So it is tree damaging activities. I was talking to Deborah earlier on today, and one of the other challenges we sometimes have, if you want to be, you know, kind of a fun sponge, is anybody that wants to build a treehouse in their yard, in a tree. And you could look at that as the same as, depending on how it's at all attached to the trunk, et cetera, as it can cause considerable damage.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Breathe, and then Councilor Appleton?
Thank you, and through you, Chair. Thank you very much for this great report. As you know, trees are very near and dear to my heart, so I'm happy to see some of the things that are, that are in here. But I'm going to talk first about significant trees. Significant trees, how many do we have in the municipality right now? My recollection is seven or nine or something like that.
Through the chair, thanks, Councilor Breathe. There's nine on the list, but I know that there's hundreds out there.
Well, that was my next question, was how many do you think are out there? And if you're seeing hundreds, then my hope would be that we could do some sort of, reach out to people to get them to, to put their trees on the significant tree list, because that I think would be really helpful. But, and maybe it starts with, you know, you mentioning or you getting a list together or something like that of the significant trees within the, within the community, and then we can perhaps reach out to those, those people who have those significant trees, because I think it would be important to get those trees on the list. And if I may continue, my other question is in regards to building envelope and footprint. I know that that was one of the things that came up in your suggestions, which, I just have to pull it up on my screen again. I guess what, where I'm coming, how I look at the building envelope and footprint is I would like to see us have more control or staff have more control over, when there's a clear lot, to be able to, if there's a, if there's a footprint of a house that's to be built, and it's in such a location as to, that it would take out three or four trees, that staff or council, that staff would have the ability to say, move the house, move the footprint over five feet, and yes, cause a variance, but then when it's brought to council, council would say, we're okay with that variance because you're saving five trees. So I would like to see that really strengthened within, within this, either through a staff, I'm not really sure how to go about that, like whether that comes from a staff level or, I'm not sure if anybody has any help on that.
We posed it as a question, if there is anything within the Tree Protection Bylaw that could address that, to allow for some, I guess, request of new builds to accommodate trees and leave them in place?
I'll certainly have a conversation with Bruce and Deborah, and we'll look for clarification for that in the bylaw.
If I'm...
Mr. Anderson was going to add something, I think.
One thing I did want to mention is that when, when we do have plans come forward and we have an identification of trees, our intent would always be to try and encourage some, some possible relocation, and I'm sure you can appreciate on a, on a typical single-family lot, that there are a whole host of sort of demands on, on property for servicing, et cetera, so that, I just want you to know that in, from an intention perspective, staff do and would try and encourage a shift of the footprint if that's at all practical, and it does in fact end up protecting trees. But again, I think it's not so much, the tree bylaw tells us what we should be trying to do, and then how we go about that is really through our practice and procedures.
Thank you, and if I may continue, that's, that's good to hear, because I think that the only times that we ever get to help make a decision on that is if there's a variance and a house is coming forward. So to know that if there's, that staff is, has the capability of asking a builder or an owner to be able to move that over, to move the footprint, that's, that's a good thing. I see you want to make another comment.
Just, it is, it is an encouraging word category, if I may.
Yes. And then, if I may continue through you, Chair, my next question would be around bylaw enforcement and fines. As we know, and I think you've pointed out, Mr. Heidley, that sometimes in the uplands, for example, a, a builder or an owner may want to take down trees and perhaps might not get a, a permit to do so. And right now, the maximum fine for that, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, is ten thousand dollars a tree. Correct?
Mr. Heidley?
That is correct, Councilor Braithwaite.
Okay, so, my question is, again, through you, Chair, if, if someone is taking down trees without a permit and it's basically to add, say, I don't know, whatever, like a, a sports area to their backyard or something like that, and they take down a certain number of trees and we're only allowed, how can we charge them more than ten thousand dollars, I guess is my question, because when you're looking at a property, and again, I'll use the uplands as an example, that if they're building a house that's worth three million dollars, ten thousand dollars or eight, eighty thousand dollars worth of trees for them to tear, tear down, means nothing in the scheme of things. So, how can we make it mean something?
Thanks, Councilor Braithwaite. It, it can be ten thousand dollars per offense, depending on the offense. So, it can be increased that way. To take it to the next level, it really needs to be, become a criminal case or something along those lines where it actually goes to court where the possibility of increasing fine is, is, is there.
So, if I might continue, so, by taking down a tree without a permit, is that not a criminal offense? Or would that be considered a criminal offense? Or have we never pushed that envelope before?
It would depend how egregious the individual was and, but usually just removing of a protected tree, the minimum fine in the, in the new recommendation is twenty-five hundred. It can go all the way up to ten thousand dollars. It's, you, you have the, the leeway there. So, it, it really depends on, on the, the situations.
Thank you. So, ten thousand dollars is the maximum unless we charge them criminally?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for increasing some of the other permit applications, fees and some of the other fines, because I think that so much time and energy is spent on, from your department within the community on trying to protect these trees and trying to help our citizens know how to prune the trees, et cetera, that it, it helps to have that portrayed in the, in the fees and fines. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Braithwaite. Before I go to Councilor Appleton, I'm just going to follow up on the fees and fines a little bit. When we've had criminal or near criminal activity type fees in the, fines in the past, they've been based on the value of the tree by an assessed tree value. Is there any mechanism within our bylaws that we can use the actual value of the tree, which was often those large trees up to forty or fifty thousand dollars as a replacement cost charged? Is that not possible within the bylaw structures allowed under the municipal law? Where, where is that restriction coming from? Is it? I'm not sure who would answer that question, if they can answer it.
Your worship, staff would, could recommend taking a look at possible mechanisms for that, but to answer it here off the cuff, I'd, I'd be
Fair enough.
wary to do that, but I have flagged that for follow-up.
Okay, and the, the other follow-up I had on that one was just, under the proposed bylaw, all trees planted as replacement trees, like with, under a landscaping plant are protect, are, are protected trees. And are, I guess, just from a pure enforcement perspective, is it practical to try and apply those, those kind of penalties for a lot of which would be smaller trees in people's backyards? We wouldn't necessarily know what's going on in those, in those properties. So, if we discovered a, a tree missing in a few years' time, how would you allocate that, that blame or, and, and the fee? Mr. Heidley?
It, it would depend on the circumstance. For a tree that would, that goes towards future canopy cover would certainly be a, worthy of, of a fine or a dereliction of duty, per se, to, to the actual landscaper, property owner, what have you. For another tree where the canopy cover is met and the tree was planted as an extra, I think there would be some leniency there where we'd be able to look at things objectively and make a sensible decision.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Appleton?
Thank you, worship, and through you too, staff. Also pass along my, my congratulations and my thanks for a comprehensive review of the bylaw and certainly this is clearly something that the community's been asking for, so appreciate all staff's hard work on this. Firstly, I'd, I'd just like to ask a question specifically, this is an extension of the discussion about fines, and I just wanted to ask a, a question about how the proposed fine structure that's laid out here in Schedule B lines up with the schedule in our ticket information utilization bylaw, which itself has a schedule that deals with fines relative to the tree protection bylaw. And I'm just noticing that the, the schedule, Schedule B in the proposed bylaw doesn't line up, doesn't line up exactly with the fines proposed in the existing ticketing bylaw. So, I'm just wondering what the strategy would be for updating the ticketing bylaw to reflect this. I'm not sure whether it happens automatically or whether there's something that's a consequential amendment that goes to reflect the schedule update. So, that's more of a, a structural, structural question.
May I put that to Ms. Hopkins, Ms. Varela more than the staff, if that's, or somebody has an answer, easy answer for that? Mr. Anderson?
One comment I will make is that there are limitations in terms of the municipal ticketing fine structure that, that are provided to us through that, that structure. So, there, there might be a little less variability under that structure than we have under our other bylaws. So, that's the one point I'd like to make. Thanks.
Absolutely, and, and recognizing that, just, just for example, the proposed, we've got fines laid out in the schedule of a thousand dollars to, for, for instance, failure to protect trees during construction, whereas similar contraventions in Schedule fourteen of the existing ticketing bylaw have that at, at five hundred dollars. So, I, I, the, the upshot of this, my, my point being, I think it would behoove us and recognizing that a thousand dollars is the maximum fine that you can use under that ticketing utilization bylaw in this context, I think it would potentially be suitable for us to consider adding additional language into that ticketing bylaw to provide for those maximum ticket fines for ongoing offenses. For instance, things like contravening tree protection, fencing and tree protection measures as laid out in the bylaw. I would, I would advocate and I, I would support strengthening of the existing ticketing bylaw to allow for a still levy, not fines for, an ongoing fine or a daily fine for ongoing contraventions of those, of those conditions. And I, I kind of see language in, in the bylaw that, that works that direction, but it's, I don't see the, the exact lineup with, with the ticketing bylaw. So, just wanted to make that point and, and maybe just get a, a clarification about how the ticketing bylaw would be updated consequentially.
Why don't we just leave that with staff to make a note of and bring it back to? Okay, thank you for reading that.
Yep, thank you. And if I may, I also wanted to ask a question specifically about tree protection measures. The, the draft bylaw proposes that, that tree protection will be specified in that, essentially that it's developed in conjunction with the, with the manager of park services, that there would be a, a management plan prepared, which, which sounds reasonable to me. I was just wondering whether there was consideration given to a schedule outlining standardized tree protection measures, inclusion of tree protection fencing. Other similar bylaws of this type include tree protection specs as, as a schedule to the bylaw, so just wanted to have staff comment on that.
Mr. Heidley?
Through the chair, thanks, Councilor Appleton. We, we do have that as protecting trees during construction. I will say it, it needs a review, as does quite a few other pieces of, of information that are a complement to the bylaw in regards to tree protection and on, also an awful lot of other information about trees in general. But we do have one of those already that the, the developer does receive or the contractor receives at the application process.
Councilor Appleton, any other questions? Councilor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair, and it's been absolutely fascinating listening to all the wonderful comments from, from my council colleagues. I, I sent a few questions through to building and planning and I'll ask those questions now, if I just give you a second to find them. And the first question has to do with steep slopes being mentioned in the tree protection bylaw. Very much appreciated being there. If, if council recalls in the previous mandate and then, and then more recently, I put forward a notice of motion to, to investigate and possibly find a way of, of regulating steep slopes within, within Oak Bay with respect to some rocks that appear to become unstable, appear to be, come, come unstable in the Sunny Lanes area and, and other parts of Oak Bay that, that are potentially geotechnically unstable. We don't know yet. Of course, that's, that, that's depending on, on professionals to, to provide that information. But I did, did note that in this proposed bylaw, steep slopes is defined as twenty percent or greater, I believe, but it doesn't appear to be used much. A reference is made to Schedule F and that's about it. I was wondering if, if building is in planning could please make reference to how this will be used in practice in Oak Bay, please?
Go ahead, Mr. Anderson or Ms. Jensen?
I, I guess the, the one comment to make is that when we do have development proposals put before us and there's, there is an identification of the potential for steep slope on a site, we can actually ask for information to be provided, geotechnical information for us to assess whether or not, A, there's a steep slope and whether or not trees need to be retained in that area in order to reduce the, the hazard condition, if you will, on the property. So, that's sort of an onsite, sort of site-by-site practical application that we have. We do have a broader development perimeter to do with hazardous conditions. That's referred to in Section seven of the report. As you may be aware, that applies to a fairly specific area of the district at this time, but that's sort of a, a method that more generally is, is available for us, so.
Thank you very much for that. I very much appreciate it. I certainly would like to see this, maybe, maybe similar to climate change, I'd like to see something put in place sooner than, rather than later, as opposed to it being perfect and never get put in place. So, which is why I'm, I'm generally in favor of, of, of it. I'd just like to say that from, from the start and all the wonderful work that's been done by planning, by, by parks, by the rest of staff, by legal, to, to get us to this point. With respect to Schedule F, I appreciate the approach taken with respect to steep slopes and trying to provide some rigor with no dollars. I know we did basically made reference a few months or, a few months ago or maybe before, before our priority sessions to, to possibly bring this forward and I remember referring to, to a report that was, came from building and planning back in twenty eighteen, related specifically to steep slopes. And it was referred to, to priorities and planning with a suggested thirty thousand dollars cost to come up with, I guess, a, a proper Schedule F. So, since we didn't assign the money, starting somewhere, starting with something is better than starting with nothing. So, from that perspective and hoping that it will in the future get, get more detailed, I just wanted to point out that when I go through the Sanatches, Schedule A, steep slope areas, from their steep slopes bylaw or, or tree protection bylaw, that includes similar protections for, for, for steep slopes. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, there are eight, eight pages with, with quite detailed areas pointed out of, of areas that, of, of similar topographical concerns to Oak Bay that we, we may, I would imagine going forward, would want to come up with a mechanism for either replacing Schedule A, Schedule F with some, some more appropriate and detailed, steep slopes area list. So, that's what I'm imagining will, will, will happen going forward. So, one question I would, I would sort of come out of that for me, which would be to staff, through you to staff, was if we did approve this bylaw as is, would it preclude any kind of a future significant tree committee or a, 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 a committee of some sort to help support and flesh out some of the silent aspects of this, of this bylaw? Would there be anything to preclude us from striking a committee to assist with getting more than nine significant trees in place, fleshing out, for example, the steep slopes area or, or other potential deficiencies as of today?
I would just say that's council's purview. We can always do that. That's not really staff's piece. We can always, we can always do that if, if council sees the wisdom in it. That's a way of improving. I think you had two questions there. One was around the DPA areas, which would be really a delegation to staff, and the other would be consideration of, of what we can do to kind of facilitate some of the aspects of this bylaw. And I think the latter part is something we should put our minds to ideally today, a little bit, to think about how we might help facilitate that. And Mr. Heidley, I think spoke to that. We want to make this a good news story. How do we help make people make it successful, so?
Yeah, so, I, I, I thank you. Thank you, Chair. I, I, I agree with you. It's within our purview and I would definitely, I'd like to find a way to support the parks wrecking culture, support parks, support the process going forward with respect to its, its impact on climate change and on the tree health in general and the reduction of hazards throughout the, the, the district. So, probably not at this time, but at a future time, I'll definitely be interested in supporting some sort of striking of a committee to, to support this. In the meanwhile, I think it's reasonable or, or today to use a DPA area as a replacement. I certainly would not want to have to come up with a, an official community plan change, which I know is a horrible process as a way of being able to update this, this bylaw going forward. So, I would hope that eventually that, that DPA area would get replaced with something that would be specific to this bylaw. That, that, that would be just a general wish I would put out there and depending on how council wishes to proceed.
It's, it's not, since it's not part of this bylaw, there's, there's a hazardous areas DPA, which is restricted to the area highlighted in Schedule F, but you're talking about the possibility of additional steep slope DPA areas. That's something we, we consider for, for strategic planning this year. I think you, I think you're bringing that forward?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a piece, not, no, no expectation it's part of this bylaw, but just as part of the piece. I'm just clarifying. Is that correct?
You're absolutely right. Yes, you're, you're, you are correct. And it's by adding that in, it would get it from where it is to perfection and I don't want to wait for perfection. So, that's why I like to move forward this sooner instead of later. So, I'll just sort of leave that for now as, as slightly undone, but still very satisfied. So, that was one question and thank you through staff to building and planning for that answer to the first question about steep slopes and how it will be used. The only remaining question I have is, why twenty percent? And where was that number chosen from? And how will twenty percent be used versus saying nineteen percent or some other number?
Mr. Anderson on this one, I think?
Yeah, it's interesting you ask that because it's, it's, it's kind of fundamental, but that is a slope at which instability can, can come into play and I have seen twenty percent and thirty percent in different conditions in, in, in my previous experience in terms of when you're applying steep slope conditions. So, it really is the point at which we, we can see unstable slope conditions that potentially can be exacerbated by construction or removal of trees or any of the above. So, it is one of those, not unlike a fifteen-meter setback from a water course, it's one of those sort of best, I guess, case measures that, that we've come to, to use in the, in the, in our practice and basically addressing, I guess, generally environmental issues. So, that's really the basis for it is geotechnical and it's, it's been in play for as long as I've been playing.
Thank you. I much appreciate that. Sounds like a rule of thumb and makes sense to me. With respect to Section seven point two, it makes specific reference to only three hazards, flooding, erosion or landslide. However, I do notice in Section fifty-six of the community charter, which I believe was the element that was used to force force a geotechnical report on the property on Sunny Lane that cut deeply into the cliff. I imagine that, uh, uh, under Section fifty-six, this was, was where the geotech report came from, since we don't have a steep slope approach. I can, I'll sort of ask to see if that's the assumption?
As I mentioned, when we identify steep slope site conditions, we can then require the geotechnical work to be done, the assessments to be done.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So, in that particular Section fifty-six, it mentions a number of additional hazards. So in that particular Section 56, it mentions a number of additional hazards: flooding, mud flows, debris flow, debris torrents, erosion, landslip, rockfall, subsidence, and avalanche. I can imagine we probably don't need avalanche today, but what was the rationale for not including the others, please? Subsection 2B.
Sorry, your question was the rationale for not including something in the charter?
I apologize for not including, in Section 7.2 of the bylaw.
I'm sorry.
I'm assuming this came from Building and Planning. That may not be true. It may have come from parks. It came, I apologize.
We'll take it as a team effort here.
It's a team effort.
If I can speak to that through the chair.
Yes.
The development permit area is contained within the community plan, and the community plan identified those items as the ones that are going to be subject to consideration for our development permit area. So that's coming from the community plan, and that was provided at the time the community plan was prepared. So I can't speak to why additional items in the charter were or were not added, but at the time, that was obviously what was included.
All right, thank you.
Anything from parks relating to that? Is that a curiosity, or is it really a DPA issue?
Mr. Heidley, anything else you wish to add?
No, thanks.
All right.
So it sounds like to me that this selection of the three hazards in Section 7.2 of the proposed bylaw is related specifically to the DPA, the Oak Bay Official Community Plan today.
Through the chair, yes, it is, and that is what's shown on Schedule F as the area that applies.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Let me go to my next question, please. Continuing, if I may? Thank you very much. So protected tree in this proposed bylaw is defined as a listing of six tree species, and it goes into specifies that it's a tree species that exceeds a new lower height of 1 meter, or a basal diameter of greater than 4 centimeters. So this question, I'm going to start with Building and Planning, but it may go over to parks as well. We have two existing bylaws. The bylaw to regulate subdivisions and development of land, 3578, and also the bylaw for building, demolition, moving, plumbing, and blasting, 4247. Both of those bylaws specifically make reference to the plans that have to be specified, that need to indicate all trees that are 1.3 meters or higher. That, the impression I get is that that is now in contravention to this proposed bylaw. Comments, please?
Mr. Anderson?
So yes, you're correct. The new tree bylaw, well, actually, I think the previous tree bylaw also speaks to a 1.4-meter height, when we're referring to the diameter breast height measure of order over 30 centimeters. So that's part of the protected tree definition list that you'll see under that section. So we have both of those bylaws that would have been based on likely a previous standard, and the new bylaw, the tree bylaw, is the regulation that would apply in any development review conditions. The information requirements that are in those other bylaws aren't exactly that, so they're basically our starting point. But what we would do with the new tree bylaw in place, or with the existing, is we would default to the 1.4 meter. So to further on that, when we often make changes to bylaws that have related bylaws to them, there could in fact be some inconsistencies created by that action, and what we typically do is when we come to the point of updating those other bylaws, we would then modify that section to be consistent with the, for example, in this case, the tree bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Counselor Zelka?
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate that. In Schedule E of the proposed tree protection bylaw, point number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, number 6, as part of the tree management plan, a site plan of scale no less than 1, 250, identifying all trees on the property must be provided in terms of a site survey plan. I presume this site survey plan, and I want to confirm, is different than the site survey plan that would be provided as a building and planning for their building permit. We're talking about two slightly different plans?
So if I may, through the chair, the information that we would require, the tree management plan, would be provided as part of the building permit plan? So again, the tree bylaw is specifically speaking to tree management, and if that bylaw is saying, here's what you need to contain in your survey work or your management plan, that would be what we would require with the new bylaw in place? And then again, we would look at the inconsistency issue as we update our other related bylaws.
So the lack of definition here would be defined by the definition in those other bylaws with respect to what needs to be, what is, what the height of the tree that Oak Bay considers to be high enough to be included on the drawing, like, for example, a six-inch tree would not be included, since it falls below 1 meter, and also falls below 1.3 meters. That's an open question.
Maybe, should I go to Mr. Heidley on that one?
That is, that's correct. Counselor Zelka?
I very much appreciate that. And so the question that I still have outstanding, which maybe can't be answered today, is, is there an intention to update those other two bylaws to align with the new definition of protected tree being the height of 1 meter?
As I mentioned, the adoption of a new tree bylaw that has, creates inconsistencies in other bylaws would result in those changes being made when those bylaws are updated, and when those are updated is going to be determined by a number of other factors.
Absolutely understood, and very much appreciate you being clear. I'm sure you said that before, I just didn't hear you. Sorry about that. So that answers those. Oh, yes, there's one more question related to that, on the second point. The plumbing and blasting bylaw, building demolition bylaw, also has a tree type within it. Only trees of gary oak species appear to need to be identified with respect to building, building, demolition, moving, and plumbing and blasting bylaw. I was wondering whether it would make sense to replace that with the definition as defined in the tree protection bylaw?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, as any inconsistencies are created by a new bylaw, we would carry those forward to the other related bylaws and correct those when we conduct that update.
I think this inconsistency has been in there for quite some time, but I just noticed it now. Thank you for bringing this forward. And the final point is, I need to know more, please, about this tree management plan. I see it mentioned a lot, but I'd like to have a better idea of how it's going to be used. I make reference in the email I sent to Building and Planning, and I copied the manager of parks as well, with respect in particular to excavations, and possibly related to blasting as well. Some in Oak Bay have experienced situations where a lot was excavated from lot line to lot line. And of course, the B.C. Building Code says you must make sure that the public can't fall in that hole, and you must make sure the building next door doesn't fall into the hole. But it is silent, and I'm referring to Section 8222 of the B.C. Building Code, which is labeled Protection of Adjjoining Properties. It is, there's only two items that a builder has to protect: the building next door and the public with respect to hazards. So the question is, will this tree management plan in any way apply to adjoining properties? Because right now, you know, there's a lot of work been done with respect to hoarding off and making sure the trees on the property is, you know, ribboned off, but one of the holes in our process, it seems to me in the past, is that if a tree is on the other side of that property line, there's no protection for it. It could fall into the hole. And it has fallen into the hole, I've seen, on some houses that have gone up in South Oak Bay. So I put that out as a bit of an open question. How will this tree management plan be used, and will it help here, please?
Go ahead, Mr. Heidley.
Through the chair, thanks, Counselor Zelka. Yes, it would. Part of the information that would be required in the tree management plan is details of any off-site trees with critical root zones extending into a subject property, and how any impacts to adjacent properties will be mitigated, including publicly owned trees. So that would have to be captured in the consulting arborist report post beginning construction or excavation.
Wonderful. That's very good to hear, and I look forward to seeing how that's going to roll out. The, I'm sure some of the adjoining property owners would definitely appreciate to know that their trees are also protected with, and that we're taking care of the neighborhood, since, you know, we talk of streetscape, and here's a real practical way on how we can protect that streetscape for the spaces between the buildings. I have two more questions, if I may?
Please, yes.
And I very much appreciate the fact that it's only 8:20, and we've got
We've got lots to do still.
Hours to go before we have to extend the meeting.
Just ask your questions reasonably quickly, and we'll get to them.
I certainly will. The Community Charter in the schedule defines trees as including shrubs. It's very explicit about that. How will that impact this tree protection bylaw, please?
Mr. Heidley?
Through the chair, thank you, Counselor Zelka. We took the definition of what a tree actually is, which is a woody perennial plant that's 4.5 meters in height, usually with a singular or multiple trunk, and did include, or opened the door to include, some other plants that may be considered shrubs. And I'm going to use rhododendron as example. Many rhododendrons are long-lived, large, and could be considered trees when not many other shrubs really can be. There certainly are exceptions. In the bylaw, rhododendron was used as reference, but it would really be a situation where if something was really outstanding, we would consider including it as canopy cover percentage on a property. But it would be a, every scenario would be different.
Thank you, Mr. Heidley.
And let me just say thank you through the chair. I very much appreciate the arborist speaking as an arborist. And when I am trying to decide whether I want to plant certain types of trees or certain types of shrubs, I will go to an arborist. But I'm actually not asking an arborist question. I'm asking a question relating to law and precedence in the B.C. government. I'm holding up the book, that's the local government, A British Columbia Legal Handbook, from the Continuing Legal Education Foundation of British Columbia. They track all of the precedences in the court cases with respect to trees that are brought forward, and tree cases, and shrubbery cases. And I imagine that that might be why.
Counselor Zelka, can we get to a question?
Yeah, oh, I am getting a question.
Okay, thank you.
So this is, the question may actually fall more to Building and Planning. So I know we have a tree protection bylaw, and I know that there's a definition of trees with respect to arborists, and we look to the arborists to help us determine, you know, the sizes of trees, and that we have some aspects of trees that are specific, some specific shrubs that are specifically mentioned, but those other shrubs that aren't mentioned, the law also calls them trees. So I have a question then, that would fall to Building and Planning. How will it fall to them for those items that are legally trees, but aren't, but our tree protection bylaw is silent about?
I'm not sure who to give that to. I guess it's a question of our bylaw superseding, our definitions supersede the general descriptions in that, in the precedents, or?
I would, Counselor Zelka, I could only use the, what is the recognized international society arboriculture definition of a tree in this particular case. That's what we base the interpretation in the bylaw. And I would say that, as again, it would really depend on the actual species in and itself. Does it meet the requirements of 4.5 feet? Does it have a single trunk? Is it woody perennial? Does it count towards canopy cover? All of those things would come into the consideration. That's as clear as I can be. Maybe Bruce can elaborate, I don't know.
Again, there's no thank you out of that? Okay.
Okay. I only make reference to the Community Charter, Chapter 26, Section 1 Definitions, tree is also defined as a shrub. That's all I wanted to say. It may come back to bite us if we don't address it. That's all. I just wanted to at least highlight the fact that that exists, and that some, because we have such amazing folks out in the, as citizens, they may look for areas within our, within our tree protection bylaw where it's silent. So I just wanted to see that, if we do have some silent areas, we need to be cognizant of it. The last question, if I may? With respect to the tree protection bylaw, I very much appreciate the attempt to go with canopy cover, canopy cover approach. So flipping it on the other side, for those of us, like for me, I have probably 20, maybe more protected trees on my property with lots of canopy cover, I will be wanting to put solar panels on my roof. So the question I want to ask is, for those property owners who already are well beyond 40% coverage, will it, does this proposed tree protection bylaw allow for these pockets of light to be opened up in certain areas, such as over a roof, to make room for solar panels?
Mr. Heidley?
Through the chair, thanks, Counselor Zelka. Again, I would have to say that it would be a, each scenario would be evaluated accordingly to see if there was possibilities of success. One of the things that you really would have to evaluate is what's the value of the tree as compared to the value of the savings in regards to the solar, for example? What's a tree giving back as what you'd get from the panel itself installed? But it's another piece where there is the possibility of some discussion, much like for vegetable gardens, et cetera. These scenarios will always arise, and we always try to address them as constructively as possible.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Zelka. I just, two quick pieces to follow up on Counselor Zelka's points. One, the wording of the bylaws, I just want, for our own comfort, it's consistent with other tree protection bylaws, just in terms of its definitions and pieces? Are we doing anything outside in the reference to the Community Charter definition versus ours? Is ours largely in alignment with other tree protection bylaws?
Thanks, Mayor Murdock. Yes, it is. I've reviewed a lot of other bylaws before we began to undertake this one.
Okay, thank you. And the other question I had was just for, this is a bylaw, so to Counselor Zelka's question, is it possible, the, there's a list of criteria which would allow for removal of a protected tree, so if there was a gary oak that was casting a shadow on a solar panel, my reading of those criteria would not allow for that to be removed. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct. The tree itself would not be allowed to be removed, but the opportunity is there for pruning select limbs to let more light into the solar panel.
Okay. And if a tree did come out, the current bylaw would have, would see it replaced with two additional trees in that situation? If it was a gary oak going down?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're clear on what the bylaw is talking about, and we keep our focus. And Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much. Related to that, this is a question for Building and Planning. Section 53 of the Community Charter, General Authority in Relation to the Buildings and Other Structures, recently was added an ability for council to exercise its authority to pass in the spheres of authority, the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions is an area that we are now providing new areas of authority, which is fantastic. So solar panels, for example, could be an area where we can now do things with our buildings. Now, I don't know how that applies with trees, we'll have to figure that out, but since this is a relatively new power given to councils, is this, am I interpreting this correctly? And that's a question through to Building and Planning, please?
Yes, municipalities have certainly been given abilities, particularly under development permit areas, to allow for, I guess, more green or mitigation measures with respect to greenhouse gases. That's been in place for some time, and it is a tool that's available to us to apply, yes? to apply, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And just remind us, there is some limits to how much we can offer in terms of opinions on things like community charters here at this table, because it's a very complicated document and has a lot of different ramifications and inputs from, as you say, legal precedents and pieces. I had a number of questions, but, Councilor Patterson, you had follow-ups?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to be brief, but I, I have just a, a couple of clarifications I, I would like. Under the proposed bylaw, there are requirements for replacement trees or, under this. And, and there are guidelines for the care that an owner is obligated with the new replacement tree to take. There have been instances when I have in fact followed the care that would fit in this, this guideline, but to the best of my ability, I have not been able to protect a replacement tree from urban wildlife. And so under this new bylaw, if that was to occur, my recourse is to keep planting a replacement tree, which can get quite expensive, or to concede defeat and just forfeit a deposit or pay for, a pay, a fee to the municipality to plant a tree somewhere else. Is that correct?
Mr. Heidley, what is the, you didn't clarify the bylaw in that, in that circumstance?
Yeah, that, that is correct, but you're referring to deer damage on trees. It's, it's relatively simply remedied with just a, a wire cage around the tree, which we would help you out with at planting time. So there would be that type of conversation. From a parks perspective, we want as much success as absolutely possible. And by no means are we going to be the Grinch on a, a scenario like that. We understand that, that just the damage that deer can do. I saw one walking down the street with half a rhododendron on its head the other day and that's just from the, the rutting. And we see firsthand just, just how they can shorten the lifespan of a tree considerably.
Thank you, Mr. Heidley. That's, that's reassuring to some degree, although not on the other. I don't like to see deer walking down the street with half a tree on them. But the, the other couple of comments I have, I wasn't clear in the document if it is the intent in the bylaw that the owner of the land on which a tree is located, is the person solely responsible for complying with the bylaw as, as opposed to an applicant who can be an agent of the owner? And if that was the intent of the bylaw, then we might want to just revisit some of the wording in the bylaw, because in some places it refers to the owner, some places to the applicant, and in some cases to the person. So, you know, that was not specifically clear to me, but I, I think that's what was meant.
Mr. Heidley?
Yes, we, we have a lot of scenarios where we have agents acting for the owner, but we always request that the owner actually sign the, the, any type of permit that they're dealing with, but often deal with representative or an actual agent themselves.
Thank you. And just the last question, because of questions I received, and then I realized the person talking to me was talking about a separate document. On the district website, there is the urban forest manag- management strategy referred to here, and there is also the urban forest strategy document. They're in two different locations. And so perhaps that says something that you could look, look at and somehow co-locate them on the website and perhaps explain because they are quite different documents, maybe explain what the rationale is to each document.
Mr. Heidley?
Yep, correct. There's, there's quite a bit of, I would say, information that we need to collect and display appropriately on our website. Most of it is, is informational and most of it is interesting information that the community will find quite interesting. And we're just beginning to review that now and hope to make good progress early in the new year.
Thank you, Mr. Heidley. I think we can take as a takeaway that we can maybe, as we're going through this process, create an urban forest or something, oakbay.ca slash urban forest or something along those lines to co-lead all of our equipment into some, into some location. Councilor Appleton, you've had another question?
Thank you, Your Worship. Very briefly, I just wanted to make reference to, to the definition of significant trees and which trees shall be so designated. It includes several categories of potentially significant trees, one of which is cultural links, it mentions that are significant because of their cultural links. I would be in support of there being a specific reference in this section to trees which are significant to indigenous peoples, with the recognition that those trees, say culturally modified trees, would be protected under provincial archaeological standards. I think it also behooves us and, and would be a suitable language to include in here to, to extend the definition of significant trees to those that are significant to the indigenous community.
Thank you, Councilor Appleton. Don't need to respond to that, that's fine, okay. I'll, I just, I have a, a number of questions, I'll, I'll keep them brief here. First of all, I just want to express my appreciation. I know how hard it is to try and create into a bylaw all the different aspirational goals of all the different people and trying to, trying to strike a balance. And I, I think the document here does a very good job of, of striking a reasonable balance. I had a couple of questions that popped to mind in the course of this conversation, I'll start with those. One was just, is there any consideration of, of including in this document any focus on location, like a preferred location? I know on our properties, there's some, you know, guidelines for putting things so they overlap roads to extend the life of the roads. And is there anything else in terms of locations on properties where it's not, you know, sort of right on the property line, where you're sort of sharing that, but you're trying to bring that, that, that canopy cover into the, into the, a little farther into the lot? Is there any, is that things that just gets dealt with at a, at a case by case level or is it something that could be considered as part of a bylaw?
It certainly could be considered as part of the bylaw, but at this time it is considered case by case level.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll leave that just as a question, if there's any suggestions later on in this process of, of a way, if that's necessary or opinionated, I'll just leave it there. I had the same concerns about the, the use of swings. I'd like to find some way of, of allowing that to happen as long as it's done in a responsible way. The, I guess I have some concerns about where these, the tree protection permitting process kicks in, just recognizing these, a, a house that's doing things right and has a large number of, of, of trees, if, you know, it's, it's things like plumbing permits and other things are listed in here, if, but if it's a minor building permit, if they have to have significant deposits being held on trees for a significant amount of time, I think those situations are danger, are just, they're fraught with turning what people love into something that they hate if they have to carry costs for those, the burdens for those. And I, that just, when I was reading this, it jumped out at me and I don't know if there's any, and I guess in, in particular on this one, where there's a diseased or dying tree that's being replaced and they have a, again, a significant hold cost for that, has been any consideration? And I know there's always a give and take and I'm trying to decide what that is on, on finding some defined kick point where there's, there's a, where there's a real risk to trees that, that these kind of things would kick in, whether that's a dollar value or an impact on soil or something of that nature? Mr. Heidley, is there anything?
Well, one of the challenges we have with, with the, the bylaw is, is the considerable loss of dead diseased or dying trees. And what's the best mechanism that is, that is constructive and goes along the lines of, of community engagement to get those trees back on the property? I don't know if what's currently in the bylaw would be, would be the best way, because I, I certainly understand that having to pave the removal of a tree and then certainly make a deposit to have the tree live and thrive for three years before you can get your money back. I could cer- certainly see that that could cause some consternation. So that's, that's one of the things that, that we may need to, to talk a little bit more about, of how that can be perceived as, as more of a constructive process. But there needs to be something there considering that about eighty, eighty-six percent of the, our trees that are lost are dead diseased or dying. And if you actually multiplied the canopy cover of those trees, and over fifty percent of them are gary oak too, it's considerable. It's a, it's a considerable area of the municipality. So how are we going to get that back and what's the most constructive way to do that while engaging the community?
And I, I appreciate those comments. I think they're just things that, as we're considering this, we're just, they, they, they came to me that those, those are areas that I can think of. The other question I have is under prohibition's three point one J, there's construction or place a building inside the drip line of a tree and a prohibition on that. But, you know, I know there are a number of instances in our municipality, Carlton House is a good example, where we sort of shoehorned buildings in around, recognizing they're in the drip thing, but, but creating special enclaves for roots and things. And I guess, does this prohibition absolute or is that in, in, it's really just for single family homes and for larger developments would, would have their own considerations? Mr. Heidley?
Certainly. There'd be considerations for, for most properties and this is where the tree management plan comes in, where the consulting arborist does have a, an opportunity to bring forward what they can do with a, a construction process or a construction style to save critical root zones of the tree. Sometimes i- it's not possible. A tree can be outside the building envelope, it can be on bedrock and there's really no viable option there. But certainly, again, the tree management plan is, is something that we do review pretty extensively when it, it comes to new development.
Thank you very much for that. And I, I guess the last, I'm not sure if it's really a question, have you, have you done any sort of assessment of what a total cost to an applicant would be? So if they're going in for a building permit, what the cumulative cost of the deposits, just undergoing a new survey for a precinct property, doing a tree inventory, hiring a professional landscape architect, which is required, and, and having them develop a landscape plan, what that looks like? I can see all of this makes perfect sense where there's a substantial development happening as a course of a new build. It makes, it's relatively minor percentage of the overall, but if a lot of smaller developments, like probably people building a deck on, if it triggers all of this, it would obviously have a substantial impact on their ability just to do minor changes. So and we're, and we're evaluating this, has there been any sort of rough estimate of what this would look like from a, from an average application? And the answer is no, that's fine, I'm just?
No.
Okay.
But I can say that the extensive amount of time that we spend on development permits and permits themselves is something that is absorbed just through our operational budget. And it, it's increasing, I'm not going to use the word exponentially, but considerably each year.
Thank you. Actually, I would say in my, my observation of that is that the, the fees structure laid out in there makes a lot of sense. I was thinking more of third-party costs of getting a site survey done and, and getting a landscape architect to do a design of those, those aspects of the requirements in that list. And those are requirements in the list as I read the bylaw.
Well, the canopy cover is, is a, is a requirement, the landscape architect is not. But certainly the consulting arborist would plot all of the trees on the property and would show us where we're going to achieve the actual, whatever, the canopy cover is, is tied to that actual zoning itself. So there certainly is a, a cost to that. Consulting arborists aren't cheap, just for a straightforward report on a single tree can be three hundred and seventy-five dollars, usually around there. So it would, it would be more than that and, and it would add some costs, there's no question. But it's, it's the way to do things properly. And we've had a lot of, well, not a lot, but we certainly have incidences where things can take a right turn on any development, once it begins with everything in place. And then all of a sudden you come and, and all the tree protection is down and there's excavators driving all over the root zones, because there's not that element of control. And this is what this whole management plan is to do, is to control from start to finish. And it does come with increased cost.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I'm going to go to the people in the audience, anybody who wishes to speak at this time. I think as, as people come forward, if anybody wishes to come forward, please do. We have a couple of things I think we have to turn our minds to after this, please come forward. One of those obviously is the details of the byline, any, any suggested changes or, or new information that we require? And also just a process, just for the committee's information, bylaws like this do not undergo a public hearing process? So we want to turn our minds to, or we want to seek out any additional public input once we get a more, a finalized version of this bylaw for consideration. Welcome. If we just ask you to turn on the microphone and state your name and municipality of residence?
My name is Ron Carter. I'm resident of Oak Bay in Falkland Road. And I'm here to speak in favor of revised tree bylaw. I'd like to offer my support, not to get in, into any details or try to keep this brief, but I think when Councilor Nae mentioned me with the Parks and Rec Commission, I was actually involved in the two subcommittees of Parks and Recreation for the development of the first bylaw and then for the revision of the, of the second bylaw in two thousand and six, that is now in, in effect, more or less. Part of the reason is I was nineteen years in Sanich managing and administrating their bylaw. And it actually, it was always referred to as the Sanich-like bylaw that was of course customized for Oak Bay. So it's, it's, it stood with, with changes of, of a bylaw that's very similar to Sanich. One thing I wanted to, to be, to emphasize is that the bylaw is just one of the tools that we use for preserving trees in the urban forest in Sanich, or in Oak Bay, sorry. And it, there are many other tools that were mentioned here tonight that are equally valuable. That includes rezoning, looking at harmonizing the different bylaws to, to be in sync with, with the tree preservation bylaw that, that Mr. Anderson has, has mentioned, is being looked at as we go. In Sanich, we used a lot of covenants. We used rezoning with, with specific language and development permit areas, we're all part of the tools. One of the major tools was of course education and, and Mr. Heidley's been, I think, been on the forefront of providing educational events as the one coming up, more to do with the climate crisis. But the urban forest is really one of the solutions to our climate crisis and climate change for mitigation and adaptation of the, of our environment and surroundings. And that's why we use the term green infrastructure, because it, it is proving to be the, the solution in, all over the world, in, in, instead of the alternative of, you know, larger pipes and, and, you know, more surface area that's just going to cause us more and more grief as, as climate becomes more, more altered. I was also a member of the EAC, the Environment Advisory Committee, that was also looking at all the different harmonizations and zonings and that, and before it was disbanded. So those are very important to be supportive of the tree preservation bylaw. The, there are many groups that, that probably held Oak Bay Council to their feet to the fire with regards to the bylaw being developed to the extent it is now. The Green Committee that was formed out of the emotions of tree removals during the late nineties was, was one of the, the major groups that, that really did encourage the, the bylaw to be, be created in the first place, or at least to develop beyond twenty-five centimeter gary oaks as being the only protected tree in Oak Bay. I, I agree with the statement by Mr. Heidley that the, the tree preservation bylaw is much, very much in harmony with other bylaws. We look at the City of Victoria and the municipality of Sanich in which there has been, they've, they've all developed their urban forest strategies. And the first item of business out of those strategies has been revising of the tree preservation bylaw. So I think we're in sync with, with what has occurred in other bylaws. The, it was mentioned several times, significant trees. And it's, it's a bit of a pet project of mine to start to look at, knowing that we only have nine identified in our current bylaw, one being dead, correct? So, so we, in comparison, Sanich has a hundred and, over a hundred and fifty significant trees. Much of that was through the work of the Significant Tree Committee, which which had been rolled in to a different configuration there. But I was the, of course, the staff representative for the Significant Tree Committee. Mr. Heidley was our chair at one point. And I always offered that I would be able to return the favor perhaps if we need a committee to review a large number of trees at one time while we try to revise and counsel, ratify a number of trees on private and public property. So I've just casually identified close to eighty trees that I think are worthy of consideration for significance under the categories that are stated in the Significant Tree bylaw, or, sorry, Significant Tree schedule. And it was mentioned also that it was Sanich that came up with a similar program of grants as is with the Heritage House Committee, the Significant Tree Grants that were provided, added incentive to homeowners to consent to their trees. And I'm very surprised that trees can be designated a significant on private property without the consent of the owners. That's new to me. And so we used to try to encourage it through the Significant Tree Grant because it is recognized how expensive it is to maintain these large mature trees that are worthy of preservation. So what Chris identified was what we came up with. And I believe Sanich was the first, and it's the only municipality I know of that has that grant system. And it worked very, very well in getting that way. So that's all I have to say. I hope that the revisions go through. If there's any delays in revising the bylaw, as I say, my project would be Significant Trees to try to identify more to be placed on the schedule. I'd be happy to help in any way, and I've offered that help. So thank you very much. Thanks for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. I'm going to take one of your comments just as a question. You can have a seat if you want, and somebody else can, which is to come forward is welcome too. But Mr. Heidley, can you give us some estimation for a large mature tree? If it was, just for proper pruning and maintenance of that, to keep it as healthy as possible, what is the approximate cost for that for a homeowner? If we're looking at, you know, looking at a grant program that would help offset or subsidize or cover those costs? Is there an estimate, a ground rule that gets used in arborist circles for that sort of thing?
No, it would really depend on the tree. I can give you a very rough estimate. You could, to prune a large Gary Oak tree and climb it, you could look at eight hundred dollars, depending on the extent of the work that was required.
Okay, thank you. And is that pruning, would that normally be done best practice annually or biannually? Or what would that look like?
Once every five to ten years.
Okay, so it's say a thousand dollars every five years sort of model of pruning, okay?
Yeah, that's a very, very rough estimate.
Very rough, but just the order of magnitude, it helps us, I think, understand. Thank you. And you said there was some money set aside from previous abandoned fines and things. So do you have some estimates, some rough estimate of what that might set at right now?
I think there's about eighty thousand dollars that is in reserve somewhere.
I won't hold you to that number, but I just, I was curious if it was two hundred dollars or two thousand or two hundred thousand. So it gives you some idea of the approximate.
And that essentially is made up by two relatively large fines and forfeited tree bonds.
Okay, thank you very much. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Rick Marshall. I'm a resident of Oak Bay. I want to express my thanks and congratulations to staff and to council for carrying out this much-needed review of the tree protection bylaw. It's been some years. The original Gary Oak Protection bylaw goes back to nineteen ninety-five. The tree protection bylaw in its current form comes mostly from two thousand and six, with some minor amendments in two thousand and eleven. And in the interim, many trees, as has been observed, have been lost to natural attrition or more particularly to development without adequate replacement and to the detriment of our community and our tree canopy. Mr. Heidley has outlined very well the need to reduce this loss of trees and canopy to our community through better protection of existing trees, as well as significant initiatives to plant more trees. He has also described thoroughly the multitude of values to our community from these trees and our urban forest. These values are fundamental to the purpose of the tree protection bylaw. It needs to articulate clearly the real value of trees, including those on private property to our community. This includes recognition of the essential role of the urban forest in mitigating and adapting to climate change. I want to touch briefly on just a few points among many that are raised in the proposed draft amendments. It's a very comprehensive document. The first has to do with the standard size for a protected tree. It's proposed that it be reduced from sixty centimeters in the current bylaw to thirty centimeters and that this is consistent with a trend in bylaw changes in other municipalities to reduced size standards for protected trees. I just want to illustrate, because it's kind of an abstract figure. This is thirty centimeters. And this is the height at which it is measured. That is a very substantial tree. It is not a trifling tree. I propose that the limit should be, if I can find it, reduced to twenty centimeters, which is more like this, eight inches at breast height. This is not breast height, except on ordinary people it is. On me, it's a little taller. That's a very significant change, it seems to me. The sixty-centimeter limit that we have been using for years has been dreadfully inadequate and that it really only captured protection of trees that were very, very mature trees. And some of those are dead, diseased and dying. The second thing is I would suggest consideration of addition of additional native species to the list of protected trees that, for which a smaller size limit applies. And that would include, I noticed that it is proposed to include the shore pine, but I would suggest also consideration of including the big leaf maple, the Douglas fir, the grand fir and the western red cedar, although there are fewer and fewer of those persisting due to climate change. One of the anomalies in the bylaw and its list of protected trees, its definition of protected trees, is that it does not specifically include trees on public property. The impact of this is that while the tree, or the bylaw requires a permit be issued, pardon me, if you were to damage or remove a protected tree without a permit, that's subject to a penalty. A public tree is not a protected tree. And so there is no penalty applicable for damage by a private person to a public tree, a boulevard tree. For example, by building a tree fort in it, by cutting it down, by fastening something to it with a lag bolt, which there would be a penalty if they did this to a protected tree on their own property because they're designated. But a public tree, a boulevard tree, is not listed as a, defined as a protected tree. With respect to the, and it's been raised about the building limits, I know it's complicated. And there are generally three kinds of, well, there are several detailed factors involved. The concept of the building, and this is with respect to construction on private property, the concept of the building envelope, the permissible building envelope being the area within the required setbacks. Trees need to be protected throughout the property. I think this is the concept. Unless it's not reasonably possible to build what's proposed or reasonable construction without the removal of the tree. There's an example not so long ago on transit where staff did their best to persuade the proponent to re-site the building so as to save a very large Gary Oak tree that was on the boundary of the north side of the building envelope. But ultimately, the proponent just didn't wish to. And so the tree was lost and there was no means under the bylaw to sway that. I think it's important when we talk about the concepts of compensation for damage to or removal of protected trees or we talk about the costs that are associated with protecting these trees, that we recognize that these costs or that compensation, if it should be, and it's been talked about in questions about the penalties provided in the bylaw, that these costs or compensation be seen to be appropriate and commensurate with the actual values of the trees at stake. To the present, we've unfortunately treated trees as if they did not have value. They do have value, there are many different values, and these values are quantifiable by standard means so that it is possible to assess the value of damage to a tree. If someone, for example, wanted to prune an oak to allow more light to a to a solar panel, then the cost associated with that, the cost in terms of damage to the tree can be assessed. I wanted to conclude that council has recognized quite appropriately the climate emergency facing the current generations of our community and has committed to defining and acting on initiatives to mitigate negative consequences for our future generations. This tree protection bylaw is one of the most significant means by which you can achieve those ends. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Does anyone else who wishes to come forward to address council?
The parade of the familiar today, isn't it?
I'm not making anybody write down their names. You can just say your name, you can just say your name for the record.
John Armitage. Thank you for this. Some of you may know I'm prone to run on, so you'll stop me if I go too long. For those of us who are not born here, I bet you the trees are a big reason why we are here. Our natural heritage, which we have inherited from those who came before, they are our treasures. And Mr. Heidley is one of our real human treasures. Thank you, Chris. And yes, trees are overlooked, they're taken for granted, especially on the west coast in general. Oh, it's in the way, cut it down, plenty more of that came from, et cetera, et cetera. As you probably know, I'm an architect, so I'm accustomed to hearing this kind of attitude all the time. I'd also like to commend the impact on, because what we're hearing tonight here is often the competing priorities of preserving trees versus allowing development. I'd also like to commend the building and planning because in my experience through the advisory design panel in the last even three years, there has been, and this coincides with the adoption of the tree canopy measures, there is now much more recognition in the development community that we take it seriously. Plans presented are better. They still have an awful long way to go. The standard means is to not show the trees very clearly, so they get overlooked. So when you're scrutinizing a project, it's very easy to not notice how many trees are being removed, the size of them, the position of them, whether there could be any ameliorative efforts made. And so there needs to be, we need to be, we need to make it plain that we take this very, very seriously. And that's one aspect of it, the enforcement of it. Another aspect is the issue of fines, fees, et cetera. All of this is part of the modernizing of municipalities' governance structures. And with modernizing comes future-proofing. And that's why we want to protect trees in the first place. They are our future. So I wonder if it's possible to hedge our bets about the future costs of husbanding these trees so that the charges that are set out have built in some means of adjustment for future circumstance. Currently, inflation is at a very low level. But with climate change, all bets are off. So, and when everybody's out there wanting to plant trees, they'll suddenly become more expensive to obtain. I'm just going to roam around, so just pick up ideas where you find them relevant. Part of, I think, the interest in one of the relatively minor parts of this bylaw amendment is this issue of designating trees. In the building heritage world, we have two levels of recognition. We have heritage registered and heritage designated. Registered, the municipality can decide it's worthy of registration, end of story. No appearance, buts, no consent needed, no funds attracted to it either. So we could perhaps have a, an educative push, a way of involving the community in developing a list of, if you like, scheduled trees. They don't all have to be designated, they could just be registered. Maybe we could involve students in developing such a thing. Oak Bay High students or university students who need a research project. The Green Committee on their own have been doing that kind of thing, using web-based information. There's resources out there that we can tap into to start to develop interest. We need to grow the interest in this thing. I commend Parks for the Grow the Oaks program. Anybody I speak to about that has no idea it exists. I know it's new. But maybe a mail-out, go to the customers, especially in the Carnarvon Park area where that's the barest part of the municipality, where the most opportunity is, where the lots are quite large, and mail out to people this program, that it exists and that there's matching funds available and on and on and on. So take the opportunity to promote as well as have a hammer when things go wrong. On a cautionary note, it is possible to have really fine trees that are in the wrong place and should be removed. They might be over mature, they might simply be destroying the, outcompeting the cops of oak trees that they're growing within. Sequoias are bad for that and so are Doug firs. Where I come from, Pinus contorta, which has now been added to this list, is a noxious weed. I had a summer job once roaming around hillside with a bunch of other people, pulling them out, bundling them up, and they were lifted out by helicopter. We had to walk home. So we could plant trees here and boost our canopy cover in no time and give ourselves a really bad problem in the future, and you know all about this. And we already have problem trees. So, and they've come before council. People have wanted to remove a tree that's protected, but it's a problem tree. So we need to build in flexibility for ourselves as a group to apply measures on both sides. I had a list of things, let me just check before I wrap up. The development, the competition for space, the development issues, the removal of trees used to be just the cost of doing business, the fines, the fees, whatever you want to call it. We need to be really muscular about that. We need to be really serious about setting high targets and then with discretion allow for, if you like, relaxing, coming down from a high number. relaxing coming down from a high number. The problem of trees that are lost, that are not within a building footprint, but outside of a building footprint. Within the subject property or outside the subject property. Oh, that's just what happens. No, we have to be really muscular about enforcing or insisting that the status of trees are equivalent to the landforms and the the water dispersal systems and everything else. And so that you get to take down a tree when you apply for a variance. If it's not actually within the building footprint. Then you have to demonstrate hardship. Otherwise, design around it as, try that. And if that genuinely isn't possible, or is genuinely contorting everything out of, out of shape. Well, then we get a chance to scrutinize it. But we have to really take it seriously, and that's part of it. And we all around this table are familiar with recent development proposals that have come up, one on the avenue. Where it all hinged on a tree, on an adjacent property. A magnificent tree. What if it wasn't so magnificent? We just wave it off. And in that particular case, there was lots else about that project that was never discussed, never really examined. It was completely hijacked by the issue of the trees, of that tree. And I heard some encouraging words today about the fact that the tree management plans would have to, per project, would have to seriously address that, because in the past they haven't. It was just, oh, well, it's just, that becomes a civil matter between two property owners. Well, what if one property owner is the municipality? It's, it's it's the kind of issue where members of the public don't see why it should be, should become a battle between neighbors when the scrutinizing authority, the municipality, has the opportunity at the beginning to ensure that those community properties, values are recognized and protected. So I'm pleased to see that the management plan is the vehicle for making that happen. I agree with Rick Marshall's suggestion of an even smaller basal diameter. Reason is that, especially in the case of Gary Oak, perhaps our butters. I'm not sure what age it is to reach eight inch diameter or 12 inch, many decades. By which time it's part of the canopy. It's canopy, canopy, canopy. That's, that's really important. And if other municipalities aren't there yet, we are Oak Bay. Let's get out ahead of them. Not just on oak trees, but others. Let's get out ahead of them and set the standard. Because that's a very reasonable one. There's, in other words, it's not just a whimsical arbitrary, oh, we want to choose a different number. There's really good grounds for going to a smaller number.
Is this where you want me to ask you to wrap it up?
Yeah, okay. You used to have a bell.
I've never had a bell. It's ringing an air horn.
No, I think no, that'll do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Armitage. All right, I guess, anyone else? Only one person left in the audience that hasn't spoken. Is there any, I'll bring it back to this table then. So we have had a pretty wide-ranging conversation about things that are in the bylaw, things that could be changed, things that, some procedural questions. And of course, how we want to manage this process going forward. None of that has a structure to it, so I will turn to this body if there's anybody who wishes to to make a general comment or make a motion. At this point, we can talk to that motion. And councillor Green?
Thank you very much. Thanks to my colleagues, to members of the public and the advocates in the audience, but especially to Mr. Hydeley and his team. And the volunteers that have helped bring us to this point. And I agree, Mr. Hydeley, with you and other speakers and my colleagues, that public education engagement will underpin the success of this, of this new approach. And that I think a letter writer wrote to us to talk about incentives are as important as sticks. I think that was the term. And I think the mayor has talked about achieving balance. I think we are in a fairly balanced place with this, with this new document. And I also believe that we are being proactive, and I think that was the last speaker's point, let's get out ahead of other municipalities. And really what this is, is an accountability framework. That's how I see the bylaw. And it also helps us to transition our thinking about trees from as nuisances or obstacles to life-altering assets, because that's what they are. I also see opportunities for some of our groups to work together. Heritage and trees are always an important relationship. And I think in terms of significant trees, as councillor Braithwaite has pointed out. Often where you have heritage properties, you have significant foliage and significant trees. So I think Mr. Carter has certainly identified 80, he said. I think heritage can be a huge help in identifying some of those, those trees. I also think in terms of small lots and small lot development. What we don't have is a clear small lot infill policy. I know that that's something that we've talked about briefly. But this is where the significance of green space is at the forefront. And so what most people see is when they see a lot cleared from lot line to lot line, and that's where people get the impression that we are not doing our job. Also the impacts of blasting, I think you remarked on hazards. If I had my way, I'd end blasting in Oak Bay, frankly. I think that we're destroying our typography as well as a lot of our natural environment. So I appreciated that you mentioned it as a hazard for trees. And also the ecosystem. It has a huge impact on the ecosystem on individual lots, and I think that's an important point. So those are basically my comments. I'm really, really pleased with what you have presented tonight. I'm grateful, in fact. And I think moving forward, it sets a bold course, as I think councillor Ne said. But it also sets a proactive course. And not to make a terrible joke, but if Oak Bay is out on a limb with this material, I'm really glad about that. Thanks.
Any other members of council? First to speak? Councillor Zalka?
Thank you very much, Chair. I'll, just a brief comment. Very much appreciate all the comments mentioned by the members of the public. And I'm reminded of the lesson of the poplars that were planted in Moscow in the time of Joseph Stalin as a way of greening the city as quickly as possible. Except these poplars brought a whole lot of problems to the extent that there's now calls to tear down these trees because they've brought so many other problems. So I do look forward to maybe ways of, of how do I say this? The, the, the choice of trees. I heard, I heard one suggestion that one of the trees on our list in the past has been considered a weed. I didn't quite completely understand that, so I definitely would look forward to finding ways of optimizing in some ways. The choice of trees that we would be proposing to move forward. I know we want to, we want to have fast coverage, but we have to be careful that we learn from lessons of the past. Thank you.
Thank you. We need to make some decisions in terms of moving things forward here. If we're going to ask staff to go back and revise this in any way, shape, or form, or if we're comfortable with it as is to go forward, we can have that as a consideration. As I said, I think we also should, but some might not have to decide that necessarily tonight as to what we want to do in terms of public input on this document, given there is no public hearing portion of it. Councillor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess when I'm looking at the options that were provided to us, one of them was to provide staff direction regarding preferred changes. And having listened to my colleagues around the council table and members of the gallery. I would propose that we consider amending this to reducing the size from the 30 down to the 20, as was proposed by Mr. Marshall. And also, as was proposed by councillor Appleton, to include the significant trees. To include trees of significance to the indigenous people. If that could also be included in the bylaw.
If you don't mind, I'm just going to treat some of these as questions, because they're raises a point, but never sort of turn to staff. I think it's worthwhile for us just to ask the question, obviously, knowing that there's been a fair bit of work put into the recommendations here and knowing there's no right answer. Could you provide any comment at all in terms of the impacts of changing it from 30 to 20? This would be for, obviously for the not identified species, for things like Gary Oaks, those would be included in the protection in any case. But these are for the non-identified species portion to reduce. So what would be the impact of that?
Thank you, Mayor Merk. It's difficult to say. As it is right now at 30 or 20, I don't think it would make it would be difficult to say what impact it's going to have on, on the parks workload in regards to how many permits that we have to respond to. And I don't know if 20 or 30 would, I could say 20 is going to be that much more. I don't, I just don't know. What we were hoping to do was to see what unfolds in the new year in regards to permit volume. Presently, we do about 250 a year, and then in numerous plans for new development. But just taking the permits as in themselves, I don't know if it's going to double or not, or, or what. I don't think it will, because what I see out in the municipality is that we're almost already there, where a lot of people think that most things are protected anyway. And some of the permits that we respond to are for trees that are under-protected. So it's difficult to say. I hope that made sense.
You can't necessarily, that's fine. I mean, we just don't know, we don't know. That's, that's fair enough. So, thank you. Councillor Ne?
A follow-up question to staff through you, Mayor. What are the other municipalities doing? Are they at 30?
Mr. Hydeley?
Esquimal is at 30. City of Victoria is in the process right now of trying to move to 30. And my understanding is before they do their complete bylaw revision. So that I think is before council going to third reading very soon. Some of the municipalities, and I forget which ones, but Vancouver City proper, Burnaby, parts of Surrey or all of Surrey are at 32. So that's where we are.
Just for clarification, follow-up on that as well, there's, there's different measurement for multi-stem trees, so it's the three largest stems up to a certain size. Would, I guess the question would also be to, do we look at adjusting that as well as a, as a potential? Or is that, are multi-stem trees typically not such an issue, Mr. Hydeley?
No, and, and there's a formula that, that would adjust itself. If it's 30, then you use the same formula as you would for a 60-centimeter center tree through, and that's a formula that's identified through the International Society of Arbiculture.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Appleton, or councillor Braithwaite? The hand was in front of his face, that's why.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that after hearing what Mr. Hydeley says about other municipalities being at 30, I would feel comfortable probably keeping that at 30 for now. And maybe seeing how that goes for the first while and then revisiting that, because we can always change the bylaw again. If we chose to get down to 20. But I think the consistency between municipalities in that regard would probably be easier to deal with different tree companies coming into the municipality, et cetera. So I just think maybe a little bit of consistency would be good. So I would prefer to, although I'd love one day to see it at 20, I think right now it's going to 30 would be the best move.
Thank you. Councillor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor, and appreciating what councillor Braithwaite has commented on. My thought on it is not so much of trying to be consistent with other municipalities as being consistent with what we need in Oak Bay. And I think Mr. Marshall's comments were good. It really is, when I proposed moving it to the lower amount, it is because Gary Oaks are the, are the main protected species in Oak Bay. And I take Mr. Marshall's comments very seriously, and that is that for Gary Oaks, especially single-stemmed Gary Oaks, very mature trees don't have that large diameter. So I really, you know, I really think it's more dependent upon the species that you're trying to protect rather than consistency with other municipalities.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Mr. Hydeley, just for clarification. That list of trees, including Gary Oaks, are protected outside of the 30 centimeter, or 20 centimeter? Correct. Those are, there's a subsection which are just protected period, if they're more than a meter high?
That is correct.
Okay. So this is for everything other than the named species in this case. Councillor Green?
Through you, Mayor, too. Mr. Hydeley, I think what you're saying is that at this point, we're not sure what the capacity issues are for your department if we go from 30 to 20. But you could bring this back to us over a period of time, once you decided the impacts, once you were able to determine how impactful this would be making that change. Because I know that in, in the body of the bylaw, there are review periods as well. But there is nothing preventing us from amending the bylaw on your recommendation. If ultimately you feel you can handle, you know, the reduction. Then I think it's fair to leave it open, perhaps. Would, would that be agreeable?
Yeah, councillor Green, that would be agreeable, yep.
Thank you. I'll just raise, oh, councillor Appleton, do you have a?
Just thank you, worship. Just following up from my question from earlier, I'm just wondering whether there is a formal motion necessary to amend the ticket utilization bylaw to reflect the amounts where the contraventions laid out in the ticketing bylaw mirror those laid out in the draft tree protection bylaw that we're reviewing here. Do we need a separate motion to amend the fines laid out, which right at the moment are different between the two? To amend that so that the fines are in line with what the draft bylaw specifies? In this case, there's a couple of line items that are proposed as a $1,000 fine in the proposed bylaw, but are currently 500 in the municipal bylaw. So I don't know whether that requires a separate motion or not.
I'll turn that question to staff, if that's part of our standard process of updating, or if that would require a separate motion. Ms. Hopkins?
Your worship, I think that we wouldn't need a standalone motion to do that. That's something that we could look at operationally to review that entire bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Appleton?
Yeah, thank you, worship, and thank you through you to staff. I just want to, there are, of course, certain fines laid out in the draft bylaw that exceed that $1,000 limit and wouldn't be applicable to a ticketing bylaw, but for those that fall at or, well, I think at, I think the minimum number is $1,000. For those that fall in that $1,000 category in the draft bylaw. I would like to see those reflected in the ticketing bylaw so that so that those, those can indeed be ticketed for in the, as per the intent of the draft bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Zalka?
Thank you for this opportunity to ask questions as we work our ways up towards a motion. Is it possible on our, on this bylaw that, that we're, that will implement this, this tree protection bylaw? To be treated something like an omnibus bylaw, like, like, like passing this could be something that could modify two or three bylaws? Such as what they do with the provincial and the federal level, where they pass a law that actually modifies a couple of different things? Is that something that, that we can do at our level? Or do we actually, actually go through every single bylaw and go through the whole process every time?
I believe we go through every bylaw. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, through the chair, that, that would be the case. We, we'd have to, as I mentioned earlier, modify or amend each of those separate bylaws to become consistent with related bylaws, yes.
In this case, however, if we make this change, the rules that are in here, they supersede if there was a you know, a different number in a different bylaw or different wording? Is that how this works?
Well, I would say specifically to the, for example, the height issue that we spoke of earlier, the 1.4 would be used in the tree bylaw as opposed to the 1.3 and the other two bylaws that we spoke to. With respect to impact on the ticketing bylaw, though, that would be a different, different issue.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Zalka, do you have another question?
Just wondering if the admin staff could possibly, or our director of corporate services could possibly chime in on on how we could potentially look at something like an omnibus change, if that's possible?
Ms. Hopkins? Ms. Hopkins?
Your Worship, so the way this works is that as council enacts something through bylaw, the only way to change it is through a bylaw. So other than doing like a sweeping repeal that repeal the whole pile of bylaws and then reestablish them, you are looking as the Director of Building and Planning said, at amending these or repealing and then drawing on a new bylaw one by one.
Thank you. Counselor Green?
Thank you. And just the issue of public engagement, which you have mentioned, Mayor, a couple of times. How do we best engage the public on the draft or however we proceed tonight? I know that through you, Mayor, to building and planning and to parks and rec, I know that you've done quite a bit of community outreach in the last few years, and you've done pop-ups and, you know, gatherings and so on. Do you have any ideas or have you put your head around how you might engage the public on this new proposal? Thank you.
If you don't mind, I might interject here. I think the, I think the question is really if the council wishes to do something, and then we'll, let's leave that. I don't want to get into, unless there's something specific that Mr. Hadley has in mind. I think this is really, is this council wish to do it? And then if we wish to do it, then let's bring back some options for that.
I do wish to do it, okay.
That's helpful if we want to have a discussion on that piece as well. And I have Counselor Braithwaite next. I just want to bring up, you know, I think, trying, as Chair, trying to condense, what I'm hearing around this table so far, and correct me if I'm wrong, is a general agreement with the overwhelming majority of the aspects of this bylaw. I'm not seeing any red flags going up. This is totally off the rails of what we were hoping for. So we're down into some of the, sort of the minutia, the details, and maybe what we can start to do is collect a few of these ideas and come back with these as options to come back and make some decisions at a future meeting. And maybe we get to that point, tie those decisions to a public process as well. But things like the difference between thirty or twenty centimeters, I would have some concerns about putting some process in there so that we don't trigger very large amounts of permitting cost if there's a relatively minor building permit going into a house, those sorts of things. And consideration of minimizing the cost to people who are replacing dead and dying trees and providing, looking at ways of providing incentives for some of those pieces. Those sorts of questions would come to mind. But I think what I'd like to do is if we go around this table, we can move this forward in principle and make some, make a list of questions that we might be able to come back with and make some final decisions at the future meeting, unless this body is comfortable at this point with all of those notions. So Counselor Braithwaite?
Thank you. And through you, through you, Chair, I should have asked this question before, Mr. Hadley, but how do our fees and fines compare to other municipalities? Are they lower, higher, the same?
They would be lower because there aren't any. So in regards to what parks charges for any permit fee or any review of a development permit is absorbed just through our operating budget. I can't speak to exactly what Sanage or Victoria are, but they're considerably more than what ours are. I don't have that exact figure.
So I guess maybe one of the things that I might be interested in is to see if there's an ability to maybe change that to, so that we perhaps would have some charge in there. If there's, if other municipalities are charging for certain things, then I don't understand why we wouldn't.
Yeah, there is a recommendation in the schedule for fifty dollars for a tree permit and five hundred dollars for review of a relatively detailed landscape plan.
Right, so, sorry.
Or a building permit.
So through you, Chair. Yeah, so I see that, but again, so those are now in line then with other municipalities? Are they still a lot less?
I can't answer that specifically.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
It was, we put it in as some cost recovery.
So what I might start asking people to do, if these are questions that you would like to have, because those fees do form part of the bylaw. If there's a desire, say for instance, to have a comparative fees to other things, if that matters, then we can make that request. If not, then let's just leave it as it is. I don't want to do a make-work project here and do things that people are comfortable with, that's a reasonable level, then we can move on. But I think at this point, if there's ideas, perhaps we can just bring those to the table and we can bring those back for information going forward. And I think what I'll do is if there's a request like that, we'll do a motion so that there's, it's the will of the body and not just sort of just general thoughts and questions. Counselor Patterson?
Just for clarification, if I could, Mayor, on that. Fees that are proposed in this, I am interpreting as they are set now, but that is something that will be monitored over time as we would other fees and will be, could be adjusted accordingly after this date?
Mr. Hadley, that's correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. I'm happy to go around the table. If there's anything that people wish to move for additional information, or if we're comfortable as it is, then we can move it forward to to annex that. For Mr. Counselor Zalka?
I'm comfortable with moving the staff recommendation at the appropriate time. I'd like to see something in place as soon as possible. I think the public is eager to see this in place months ago. So I certainly wouldn't want to slow this down in any way. Any deficiencies that I might want to bring forward or changes, I would definitely look forward to doing that in the future, to an existing bylaw that we would then bring forward at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Green?
If we're going to move this forward, and I support the staff recommendation in fact, and the will of council as well as the public, are we looking at a date then? Do you have a date in mind? It says to a future council meeting, but I think it would be important around managing public expectation that we have some kind of date identified in the future, or is that what you were thinking?
I think it's reasonably quickly, but if we want to have some additional public input of that nature, maybe given the time we are right now, maybe this year, probably more likely January, for getting some nods from staff for a public input piece before it comes back to council would probably be the timelines. That would be the reasonable expectation, I think.
Thank you. Are you looking for a motion now?
Well, we need to have some direction from this body, so a motion, yeah, if you put a motion on the table, then we can certainly talk to that and make amendments as necessary.
I will move the staff recommendation that council refer draft tree protection bylaw to zero one, twenty nineteen, sorry. Number four-seven-four-two, to a future meeting of council for consideration and readings.
I'll gladly second that.
Moved and seconded. Are there any amendments or changes people wish to see? Counselor Appleton?
Just to make, I kind of feel like I'm beating this one to death, but just to make and propose an amendment that the inclusion of trees of indigenous significance be included under the definition of significant tree.
If we're going to talk about that, we need to have a second, or I'll treat that as an amendment.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on that amendment, Counselor Zalka?
I would hope that some understanding of what that means and who would propose it, and is there a form? And it's helpful to know what that means. Thank you.
I think, just before I go back to Counselor Appleton, because I think that there's a culturally significant piece in there, so we'll just add a piece of language that also identifies culturally significant to indigenous peoples of some language in that nature. Mr. Hadley, are you familiar with, I think we just leave it as a general term and have it come back with what recommended wording would look like? We leave it that general. So that's the recommendation. We're not naming wording on this. We're just asking that for that, that some piece be added to the bylaw. Any discussion on that? Counselor Green?
Just very quickly, I'm assuming this would require some consultation with First Nations and I'm not sure, but in terms of definition and meaning, thank you.
Yeah, which is why I don't want to try and wordsmith it here. I think we just leave it as the intent from this body to include some wording as possible. Okay. We have that motion on the table. Any further discussion on the amendment? Counselor Zalka?
My concern is that if we do pass this motion, we won't see this bylaw passed in twenty-twenty. It'll probably roll over to twenty-twenty-one. So I just wanted to put that out there. Is there any idea, if there is going to be a First Nations consultation, how long that might take with respect to adding this item to the definition of cultural? It'd be helpful to know what that means from a time perspective, please.
I'm not sure we can answer that at the table. I don't know that we can answer that question. It is not a formal, like, indigenous consultation review process, like, through the province. It would be
I heard it mentioned out loud. I just wanted to understand. It would probably be more informal. It would be the staff. It would be something that would just happen, not necessarily full-fledged First Nations consultation is probably not what we're proposing for something like this. I just wanted to ask, what's the expectation here?
It's a reasonable question. I'll go to the mover of the motion and
Thank you, Worship. And it's a fair question to ask. I think that, as I understand the intent of this designation is just to provide categories under which council may consider a tree for designation as a significant tree. So it, as I read it, the language of the bylaw doesn't provide that. For example, a First Nation representative, you know, would have the ability to directly make that decision, but rather, this is something that provides the parameters that council may use for, to consider for designation. So inasmuch as I would expect that should a tree that fell into that category be brought to the attention of the district, then this would be a mechanism or language that would facilitate a conversation between our municipal government and the First Nations government about what that protection might look like. So rather than being a formal consultation on all trees of indigenous significance, which really would be covered by provincial archaeological laws, this just allows us the language to be able to address those things which may be brought to us by indigenous representatives.
Counselor Zalka, yeah, thank you. I think it's included in the culturally significant general piece, but it adds the ability to add a little bit more specific if it won't hurt. All right, so on the amendment, which is to include some language around indigenous cultural significance, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, unopposed? Thank you, Counselor Appleton. Are there any other changes, corrections that council wishes to make, or sorry, committee wishes to make recommendations for any changes? I'm not seeing any. I'm going to throw out a couple just to see if there's any interest in this. Just because I'm curious about some options on these. One would be, sorry, did not write down motions here, so I'll have to be careful about how I word this. One is if there's a motion on the table here, how can I word this? To include options, a motion to include, when it comes back for council consideration, include options for setting a I'll ask staff for some assistance with wording here, but like a trigger point or criteria laid out that would require the the full permitting application process to kick in, if that makes sense. So I guess, I guess what I'm afraid of is that, as I sort of mentioned at the top of this, is where there is a relatively minor building permit application to require the full landscape plan, the full reserving of the land, those pieces. Is there, is there some mechanism in here that could allow essentially staff to to trigger the full process as they see fit, as opposed to it always kicking in? And, or at least some information back as to where that, that would, that would, that would kick in so that we're, we have some comfort level about where the where the full process would kick in and the costs associated with that. Not asking for the costs, but just, so that's a terrible motion. If it was one of you making that motion, I would refuse to allow it, so. I'm trying to think, yeah, it's just difficult being the Chair here, trying to manage the conversation and not actually come out with motions. I'll throw it out there as an idea. Somebody else wishes to make a motion along those lines, I'll do that, and if not, then I'll just leave it alone. Because everybody needs a second in any case, so. Counselor Zalka?
Just to continue discussion for a moment, I imagine what council might want to consider is something having to do with encouragements or incentives or reductions in costs. In other words, a bit of a transition period to the full-fledged version of this, of this application of this bylaw. Because at a full-fledged payment of all these fees, you're right, it could be potentially a lot. So maybe a motion having to do with some sort of a transition period relating to the fees, possibly.
I'll, I don't know if that's possible. I think the bylaw is the bylaw. I'm not sure we can do a transition period. I'll turn to our experts here, but I don't know if that's a feasible option, if, even if, sorry, if there's a possible to put in a transition period or any of these aspects of a bylaw. I think the bylaw is in place or it's not in place.
Sorry, I am familiar with some bylaws having a timeframe associated with them. I'm not actually, apologies, familiar with the tree bylaw.
Yeah, no, I guess the question was just asked. I'm not sure it's a desirable thing. It's not, it wouldn't be what I'd be looking for. If that's, I appreciate the effort to clarify my muddy words on this one. So I'm not seeing anybody else jumping to it either. I'll leave it alone, if that's Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, Worship. I might make a motion to specifically amend section eight-point-two of the amendment of the draft bylaw under tree permit application process, which currently reads, each application for a tree or permit will be reviewed by the manager of park services to ensure compliance with the OCP, the Urban Forest Management Strategy, and the provisions of this bylaw. I would propose an amendment to section eight-point-two providing the discretion to the manager of park services to potentially omit certain permit requirements if they're considered onerous. I'm not sure whether that gets to the meat of what we're trying to do here. I do note that under section section eight-point-one subsection C, it doesn't say that the permit application process should include all reports, surveys, et cetera, et cetera, other information required under this bylaw, and any other information that be required by the manager of park services, which describes the types of information that the manager of park services may require. I'm wondering whether the language of that section allows the manager of park services to omit certain components of the permitting process or at discretion abrogate certain components of the permit process. I may be getting too far into the weeds here.
We're probably getting too far into the weeds here. I think my only concern was it was on minor, I just don't want, I would like to see this where there's minor applications not having a significant additional cost attached to, you know, people holding on fees for three years, those sorts of things for what are relatively minor building permits. That's the only reason for my concern on this one, and I don't know, we may be able to move this forward and maybe a motion was, could, could, yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Zalka.
Riffing on the idea as a point of information, we, there's a lot of uses of the word will and must. And an idea is to possibly replace some of them with shall or may as a ways of making them optional as opposed to mandatory, and that would definitely reduce the cost.
Well, I guess I'll just take it back to the upper level because I don't want to start rewriting bylaws at the table here. Is just, is there, is this concern shared by anybody else at the table? And if not, then let's just move on. And if it isn't, perhaps we can just ask staff to come back with some, some options for ensuring that that there is an onerous cost on minor building permit applications, but Counselor Ne?
So I'd just like to, through you, Mayor, ask staff a question in response to your efforts here. So to staff, I'm just going to go back to what you know about other bylaws of this, in this respect, whether or not there's distinctions between applications that come in for more minor sort of building or permits, whether they're treated differently with regards to requirements around all the processes and protocols here to within the bylaw.
Thank you, Counselor Ne. So, yeah, do other jurisdictions have, is this in alignment with other jurisdiction tree protection bylaws, I guess is the real question?
Yes, but looking at the, the the tree management plan requirements. Yes, but looking at the tree management plan requirements, there's flexibility there to ask for what's required. So, it certainly wouldn't have to be all of those things that are on the list, so that can give you some leeway for relatively minor developments to say, this is the information that's pertinent, this is what I need, I don't need this, et cetera. So, that's part of the actual review process.
Okay, thank you, and I will say, I have an enormous amount of trust that if given the freedom to be, that common sense can prevail, and I guess my concern was just, is a bylaw so restrictive that it prevents sort of common sense interpretation of that? Council Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor, and if I, just to your comments, you know, I think that the staff have provided a lot of insight into this, and they've done a lot of comparatives on this. They also, we did have a fairly intensive public engagement, and there was a great deal of support for the urban forest strategy and the management. And so I think that the community has had a great deal of opportunity to weigh in on this, and I expect in moving forward with this long-awaited bylaw, that as staff implement it, they will, Mr. Heidley always provides good reports to council, and I expect that he will continue in reporting to council on the impacts of the bylaw that we're proposing to pass council tonight.
Thank you, Council Patterson, Council Green?
I'll just-
Sorry, I'll go to staff here, just wanted to add in-
Sorry, Mr. Heidley.
Oh, I was just gonna make reference that, under 8C, it says, includes all reports, surveys, checklist, letters, and other information required under this bylaw, and other information as may be required. So, there's some movement there.
That adds more, it doesn't take away the piece, but I get the point, Council Green?
Thank you, and I would echo others' comments, that I have great confidence in our staff as well, to make those discretionary decisions. And the only concern I would have, and I appreciate your concerns about this, but we don't want to go too far down that road, because we are going to end up with a very subjective situation, and judgments being questioned, and people coming back and saying, well, you know, that's not my interpretation of the bylaw, blah, blah, blah. So I think if we can be as concise as possible and trust staff as much as possible, we'll probably have better outcomes. I just don't want us to open a Pandora's Box inadvertently.
Thank you, Council Green, Ms. Verella?
Your Worship, if we could take general direction from the table to put our heads to potential delegation of authority in relation to scalability of these projects, and bring back some options to council, I think it's difficult for staff to think of all the solutions off the cuff here, but I think if council provides a direction to go away and think about those things, we could bring back an option to you, if council would consider that.
I know, I appreciate that, Ms. Verella, I'm not sure that my concerns are shared enough by the table here, so I would take a motion to that effect, because it would change it from being, referring it to reading and public input, to actually looking at some options for changing it, which is a different sort of motion on the table, so. I do appreciate, if that's desire, then that would be the motion. And I just want to motivate here that the only thing I'm concerned about is, I don't ever want to see this bylaw make enemies of trees, I want people to embrace it, and ensure that when they see these and have to deal with on databases, that they think, oh, this is very effective and achieving the goals, and not, oh, this is causing me an extra three months of time delay or something on a fairly minor project. So that's my primary concern here, and I appreciate that's not a concern at a staff level, just that the bylaw allows it. Council Braithwaite?
Thank you, and through you, Chair, I think the other thing we have to be really cognizant of as well is that, we, I think all sitting around this table, understand that Mr. Heidley is capable of making great decisions, and would intervene where needed, and would perhaps look at everything through that lens, but I know that Mr. Heidley will not be with the municipality forever and ever and ever, and so my concern would be, what happens after Mr. Heidley retires? Like, if the next person perhaps doesn't have that capability to look through that lens, and needs more guidelines or something that would help them make decisions as to whether or not they should be, you know, following the bylaw to the letter of the law.
I'll make the motion as per staff, that we ask them to give us some options and see what that looks like, make a decision.
Second.
In terms of delegation options, so we still have a motion, it would essentially include that, then when it comes back, including some options, so we'd have to come back to a committee of the whole, I believe, if that's the case. It might make sense in that case to maybe do a special committee of the whole, where we take public input and do that simultaneously, so we don't delay it indefinitely, but we don't have to make that decision here, we can talk offline a little bit about some of that timeline. So the motion is to add that request, there's a motion or a second, or any discussion? Council Appleton?
Just, I'm just curious procedurally, because there was a motion on the table regarding option one, which was to refer to a subsequent council meeting. What I'm hearing is this sounds more like option two, which is to provide guidance to staff, so I'm just wondering whether the original motion needs to be withdrawn, or whether we can just expand on the motion that's on the table.
That's a good point of procedure here, I should, I'll just think about it for a second. Ms. Hopkins, I believe, it would actually have to change the motion here to actually refer this back to staff with more information, and have it go back to a committee of the whole, if I think it through. Your opinion?
Your Worship, I would withdraw the motion, and then proceed with the subsequent.
Motion withdrawn.
It has to be jointly by the mover and the second, if they wish to withdraw the original motion, it has to be moved and seconded. I think Eric seconded, I think Council Zelka seconded it. That's fine, so the mover and the second have not agreed to withdraw, I think I need a consent of both mover and the second, if it just be withdrawn, so if not, then we'll call, we'll go to the question on the table, which is the motion to refer to council, essentially intact with the addition, with the one minor addition, so that would be the question on the table. So just for clarity, we'd be voting on the motion, if the will of the committee is to prefer to send it back and get more information, then the process would be defeated, if people are comfortable enough with it is, then the motion is to, would be to approve this motion. So I'll call the question, oh, Council Green?
I'm sorry, I just have a question, I'm processed through you to staff, I can't vote against my own motion though, can I? No.
You may, I believe it.
Your Worship, you can change your mind on the decision, you just can't speak against it if you moved it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So we're calling the main question here, all those in favor? Opposed? Yeah, absolutely, so the motion is currently, is just, has had an amendment, but is the staff recommendation to refer it to a future council meeting, with the amendment included now of adding language for first language cultural trees, so that's the motion that's on the table right now. If it moves forward, it'll move to a future council meeting, and we'll try and find some way of doing a public engagement information, but if it fails, then we'll have to go back to this table and see if there's some direction to give some guidance to come back here. And that would include things like recommendations for, as mentioned earlier, Council Zelka?
So, in the idea about moving it forward with a public engagement thing, I presume future changes would be possible as a result of public engagement, because council hadn't voted on it yet. Is that what you're imagining the public engagement would be about, or is it just education?
Council can always change it as it goes forward. Yeah, so the motion, is that clear enough, Council Appleton?
So we're voting on the original motion to move forward?
Correct.
With the amendment.
So I'm gonna recall the question, just to ask for some clarification here. So all those in favor of that motion? All those opposed? Okay, so we have Council Braithwaite, myself, Council Nae, sorry, was there, and Council Green opposed? So that's bringing it back to the table. So the other motion suggested here was to send it back for some updates on options for, including options for delegation of authority as being part of the bylaw. Council Green?
And those options would include public engagement? Ideas for public engagement with, through you?
If that's the will, it's, we can, it's probably safe enough to make the recommendation to send back to staff with some, with that thing, plus, and include some recommendations for public engagement steps. And we can do the public engagement separately as a recommendation coming back, is that reasonable?
Yes, Your Worship.
Thank you, Ms. Verella. But I need a motion, if people wish to do that. No, we don't have any motion currently on the table for any other referral, we don't have, we just voted on one and it failed, so we need another motion.
Your Worship, sorry, just gonna jump in, this motion would not include that original amendment of the-
Oh, thank you.
Included trees of significance to Indigenous peoples.
Okay. Well, it can be re-added, yes, yeah, but it's good advice that if we're gonna make another motion, it should include that portion, ever since that was agreed upon by the will of the committee. Ms. Verella?
Your Worship, so I believe council's just trying to get back to a future committee of the whole, with some consideration around language for First Nations significant trees, as well as some possible solution for delegation of authority and exploration of linkages to the scale of the project. So those are my sort of three top of mind, you're just trying to get back to a future committee of the whole, and we'll include some public engagement notification with that.
Second.
Is that captured well enough? I just want to make sure that motion is captured. Is it possible to have it read back as, I just want to be clear when we're making the motion, that we're all voting on the same thing, because it can be-
Thanks for moving it, though.
Just indulgence for one moment, Your Worship.
No, no, let's just get clarity of language, and we'll, we can have a discussion and vote on that. Ms. Hopkins, if you could, if committee could just have a pay attention while I get the motion made by Council Nae read back.
Okay, so this is my attempt at making a summary of that, that council, or that, sorry, that council, that staff be directed to bring options back to a future committee of the whole, that includes language around inclusion of First Nations significant trees, options for public engagement on draft bylaw, and options for delegation of authority and scalability of applications.
Thank you, I have that moved and seconded. The only other one that wasn't included that was discussed but never moved was just the options for, it's not really matter, we can just make that choice about changing the size of the tree trunks as well, but that can probably be done on the fly as we go, it's a single line. So we have it moved and seconded, is there discussion? Council Patterson, then Council Zelka?
Thank you, Mayor, I just, just for clarity on this, I appreciate the recommendation that staff have come forward with, however, I don't want the bylaw to be delayed any further than the next committee of the whole, if that is possible, so I would like some commitment that that is how it will be handled, just for understanding. I don't want this pushed out any further than we possibly need to.
I appreciate that sentiment, I think it's probably shared by all of us, and we've had to figure out some way that we can move it forward reasonably expedited. Ms. Verella?
Your Worship, the next committee of the whole is scheduled for December 9th, that agenda is full at the moment, and we have channeled our work plan. Staff respectfully would request a January committee of the whole, especially with time to meet advertising deadlines for the public involvement and things like that, respectfully.
Okay, that's, that's good to know. Council Zelka?
Thank you, Chair, since committee of the whole is only once a month, if there's a January committee of the whole, then that means probably February before we could get to it. I would imagine, assuming we agree to move forward with approvals, or further changes potentially. I would hope that if we can't bring it to the committee, to the committee of the whole on December the 9th, if we can't do that, then I'll be voting against this amendment, thank you.
Ms. Verella?
Oh, Your Worship, just saying, if council chose to differ until January to give staff time to actually get the mechanics of this done, you could still achieve three readings, and perhaps with calling a special council meeting, you could get adoption before the end of January.
Just out of curiosity, what was the timeline estimated, if this referred to a council meeting, was it, because I understood there's still some work to be done on the bylaws, it was, was it intended to be read into in December or January?
Your Worship, we built out the work plan for December, and this wasn't on there in that work plan, from corporate services perspective.
Okay, thank you. So some delay, but not months and months of delay on this piece, okay. Council Appleton?
Thank you, Worship, very briefly, I would concur with Council Patterson's comments that, I'm in support of the motion as it stands, and it does with the inclusion of a component for public engagement, but I concur with Council Patterson, that I don't want to see this delayed any further, you know, inasmuch as I'm always in favor of public engagement on these types of topics, I would still like to see us complete this bylaw in January, if that's the timeline that the staff feels like they can meet.
Okay, I think we'd all share that sentiment if we can, if we can make that, but I don't think we can promise that as part of this, it's my only caveat, we can work towards that, but not promise. Any other discussion? Seeing that, all those in favor? Opposed? Council Zelka, Council Patterson opposed, so that passes, so we'll do everything we can to get this, it's relatively small additional piece of information, and we'll try and work towards getting a, some good information available to the public as well, so if there's any additional feedback, we'll have at that point. Okay, that, I believe, unless there's any other motions to be made by this table?
Motion to adjourn.
They moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed, unopposed, thank you very much.